Good evening. We'd like to welcome everyone to our regular school board meeting.
Recording in progress.
Today is Tuesday, February 21st. All board members are present in the boardroom, which includes myself, Margot Bellamy, Dave Donnelly, Pat Higgins, Andy Holloman, Carl Jacobs, Kelly Lessons, and Dora Wilson. We also have our superintendent, Dr. Jarrett Bryant, here on the dais, along with our executive assistant, Amanda Foster. And with that, we will do the flag salute. Ms. Shaw, would you lead us in flag salute? Follow up and landing.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On behalf of the Anchorage School Board, I want to take a moment to recognize and offer gratitude for the sacred ancestral lands of the Denina people. We acknowledge and appreciate that our offices, facilities, and schools are on these sacred indigenous lands, and we honor the traditional care that has been given to this land throughout generations. We are grateful for the opportunity to grow, learn, work, and create educational communities on this sacred land. We extend continued respect for the many cultures, creativity, and resilience of its indigenous peoples. Chinon.
Thank you very much. And that brings us, just like to make a quick opening statement, and thank everyone for being here. We welcome, we'd like to welcome you to our meeting. And thank you for attending and supporting the Anchorage School District and this board. The board wishes to thank our students, parents, teachers, staff, school business partners, and the entire community for your investment in our district with your time, your talents, and your tax dollars. And we're happy that you're joining us today. That brings us to item A3, approval of the agenda.
Madam President, I move to approve the agenda as presented. Second.
Moved in second to approve the agenda as presented. Any opposition? Seeing and hearing no opposition, the agenda is approved as presented. And that brings us to item B1, our student representative. Ms. Shaw?
So SAB, or the Student Advisory Board, held our February meeting on the 14th in the afternoon, and we started with small group discussions, getting to know each other more and talking about what groups we all represent and how our schools engage in civic education. Following this, we went into our school reports, where each school shared how the extended 30 minutes have impacted their school. Next, we heard our school spotlight reports from East Family Partnership, Gruning, and Goldenview. These schools shared information about their school and what makes them unique. I shared my school board report, and then Member Lessons gave some brief comments. After that, we elected my president-elect, or the person who's going to take my place when I graduate in May. I'm proud to share that our SAB president for the 23-24 school year is Joshua Pack from Polaris. Josh is involved in many ways throughout the district, and he traveled with us to Juneau last year for the legislative fly-in. After that election, we heard a presentation from Member Lessons about civic engagement in education, and we ended our meeting with a resolution brought to us from Eagle River High School titled "ASAA Vote Resolution", where we had a short discussion that is going to be continued into our next meeting, which will be on Tuesday, March 21st, at 8:15 in the morning. And that's all I got.
And thank you very much. Any questions for Ms. Shaw? We were expecting a couple of students that did go to Juneau, and so we will invite them back to another meeting. They were, they joined the board members in advocating in Juneau for ASD, and they had lots of wonderful things to say. And the legislators listened, which is also great. The next item is just a point of information regarding our controversial issues committee. From time to time, questions about specific books will come up, and it's because of these times that the board and the school district has a formal policy and process to process and address any book or instructional material. We are, we invite parents, citizens, anyone in the community, if you have a controversial item that you wish to have addressed, we invite you to do so through that committee. The administration is currently working on software that will clearly delineate what is available for student checkout and what is not available for student checkout. Some materials are labeled "staff only", however, we do realize that that notice is not clear in the current catalog, so we are working to get that addressed. But if you have questions about, or would like to have an item, a book, or instructional material processed, I invite you to our website, asdk12.org, and you can look for controversial, do a search for controversial issues, and that process, which is a very detailed process, will come up for you. So with that, I'd like to move on to our goal monitoring, which is item C1 on our agenda. Tonight's discussion is reading proficiency. As soon as I find my... And we do know that with the Alaska Star, I mean, we've gone from Peaks to the Alaska Star, and there will might be other changes that we might have to change, consider in our goal monitoring. But tonight's discussion, our primary conversation will be focused on reading proficiency goal 1. And that goal is, beginning September 20th, the percentage of third grade students proficient in reading on the state summative test, also known as the Alaska Star, will increase from 40% to 80% by May 20th, '26. The interim, we will also have conversation around the interim goal 1.1, and that interim goal reads, the percentage of K2 students at or above reading benchmark, above the reading benchmark on interim assessments, FastBridge curriculum-based measures will increase from 37.5% in the spring of 2021 to 80% in spring of 2024. Before we begin, I'd like to just make sure that, to confirm that all four components of our monitoring report is, are present. The report clearly shows what is being monitored. The report shows data for the last, for the three previous reporting periods, the current reporting period, and the target reporting period. The report shows the superintendent's evaluation of the district's performance, and the report finally shows supporting documentation that evidences the superintendent's evaluation via the tables provided, and it includes next steps. So with all the components present, we are ready to begin our progress monitoring conversation on reading proficiency. Board members had the opportunity to send in prior questions. If not, you certainly can bring questions forward tonight as well. Once the board fully understands the current reality, we will, we will move from the who, the why, and the what onto the how. So with that framework, we are ready to begin our discussion. So who has a question for the superintendent? So, oh, I'm sorry. Member Lessons. I know, I know you had some wanderings, but now you can put those into questions if you like, or just...
I'll try to focus on questions rather than commentary.
Okay.
So one of the questions that I have is really in relation to the COVID pandemic and what has happened since then as we've returned to school. And I'm curious about, you know, what, what data do we have that showing which student groups may be rebounding from lost learning opportunities? And if they are rebounding, you know, under what circumstances? Like, when we look at just the smaller drop from fall to winter this year than fall to winter last year, is that an example of a success story? But are there any particular subsets of students that we're seeing rebounding in any particular ways?
So I'm going to let, so Sven Gustafson, Chief Academic Officer, and I'm going to let Chris Opitz, our Assessment Evaluation Senior Director, chime in on that one.
Thank you for the question. It's a, it's a difficult question because simply there are so many variables that impact student achievement. And what I would say is, we may find pockets, small moments or glimpses of data that support growth or achievement in certain areas. Now, can we say that's directly related to COVID? I think that's a very, very difficult correlation to make. I would say it's a correlation, and I think it's really important to consider what's causation versus correlation. But what I would say is, the main factor that I see is that it comes down to the classroom and the teacher focusing through our MTSS structures on specific students' needs and addressing those in the real moment. But to say we are making a large rebound would be a difficult correlation to make.
Sure, follow up.
So I thought a lot about resources over the past few weeks. The question of do we have adequate resources, you know, as, and you just referred to, you know, what's happening in a specific classroom, and I think that's absolutely important. Roughly 25% of our elementary classrooms, according to an RFI that we received, exceed 25 students per class. That's over a couple hundred classrooms in our elementary. 37 classrooms have more than 30 students. 37 elementary students have more than 30 students in them, according to the tally that I ran. Do we have the resources from the state of Alaska to adequately dial into our students' needs in our classrooms?
I can take an initial step at this. Thank you, Member Lessons, for that question. I think that evidence could suggest that there's not. You know, the district was interested in commissioning a study to look specifically at the base student allocation, for example, and to see what would it take to actually implement research-based practices, the practices that the research and data indicates actually lead to student achievement. And I suspect that number would be far beyond what we're currently investing in students, but that's just one perspective. You bring up class sizes, which is another great observation, too. Some research suggests that smaller class sizes lead to greater academic attainment. Other studies say it's more nuanced and complicated than that. But from my vantage point, I think what's even more alarming than all of this is the fact that because of the pandemic, because of outmigration from the state of Alaska, there are so many positions that continue to be unfilled. So you may have a classroom of, you know, 12 students, but if you have a permanent substitute teacher or evolving door of staff, that's not good for student achievement either. So it's very complicated to what Senior Director Opitz pointed out, and that's why we're very appreciative to have this opportunity to discuss what additional resources are needed so that we can do the best we can with the resources we have.
And that, that kind of brings me to my question. Can we make this 80%? I mean, I know we're going to make, so we started out in 2020 with our goals and our guardrails. And I'm just curious, I'm, I'm just curious as to how we are, because we're also looking, you gave a beautiful presentation during our work session today. Where does that, how is that going to help improve the scores, at least in the K3 grades? Could somebody speak to that?
I smiled at Mr. Opitz when you asked if we could make the 80%, because this is a conversation we have almost daily. And so we, we will continue to work towards making that 80%. I think that in looking at the new curriculum, I think it's a right step forward in re-analyzing our multi-tiered systems of support, the MTSS plan. I think that's a step in the right direction. I think we're making those right steps. I think we've got a great team up here where we're constantly engaged in conversation about what does that look like, what are our needs? How do we move forward with the, with the resources we have now? What resources do we need and that we can come and ask you for, like adopting a new curriculum?
Okay, all right, thank you. Any other questions? Uh, Member Higgins?
Thank you, I appreciate the presentation. Do we have data showing how all kids are advancing academically per year so that we know kids that are ahead or advancing a full year or not? We've got a lot of parents with kids and kids out there that are excelling, and they want those, and I do that with my grandkids and with others, too. They want them to continue to grow and not focus on the cluster, but all kids advancing full year academically. Do we have data on that that we can see how, how many kids are academically advancing a full year every year so that we're not holding kids back? Or kids that are in first, third grade, that are at first grade reading level at the end of the year, we hope they're at second grade, even if they aren't up to scale, that they're still advancing. Do we have data like that? I know at one time we had it by, by, by grade and by school. And so we had a lot of data out there, and it was revealing. One revealing was third grade, where we had pretty flat academic growth in reading. It was identified not to school and location, it was the curriculum. So that was a revealing bit of information. But I'm just wondering if we had that. I know that in the past, I'll share with you, the board asked for it and was told we didn't have it. And the new superintendent came in, and we had all of it handed for three years. So I just don't know if we have that, but to me, that would be very revealing information.
And thank you for the question. I think it's a really important question, first of all, because what you're talking about is the difference between proficiency or benchmarks and growth. And what you're asking about is, are our students growing in a positive direction? The, I'm not, I can't speak to the exact data in the moment. It might be something for the RFI process that we could get to. But that is, it's an essential question, and we do have information, even when you log into FastBridge or MAP, it does show growth as an option. What I will say is, with the science of reading, we do see pretty significant growth with our kids that are performing well, specific to what you were asking. And so that, that's something that we can look further into in more detail.
I'll add it to the RFI list.
Yeah, I'll, I'll put together a question for you.
Okay, thank you. Other questions? Member Donnelly?
Thank you, Madam President. Last time we went over the interim goals for reading proficiency, I asked about the circumstances that we faced right before the pandemic, where we had someone go from classroom to classroom and check on the implementation, the actual utilization of the curriculum that we had. And they found that less, it was like 25% of the classrooms were actually using the curriculum that had been adopted by the board. And then there was subsequently, we were told that there was a correlation between the classrooms that were using the curriculum and success. They were actually succeeding better than the classes where the teachers were refusing to use the curriculum. Do we know, and I asked this last time, do we know how many of our classrooms have implemented with fidelity the existing curriculum for elementary reading?
So we're discussing the exact data. So we did conduct implementation walks, but it was, it was not every classroom, every school. So it was basically a sample size. And I'm trying to think back what that exact number was, because I remember our director, Diane, or at the time, presented the information to you. I want to say that about 70% in that sample size were utilizing the curriculum and then utilizing as intended, but I, I don't remember for sure, and I can probably look that up and send that to you.
Okay, thank you. Could I do a follow-up?
Yes, you may.
Right, so has there been any effort to correct the 30% that aren't using the curriculum? And if so, what efforts are we, how are we doing that?
Yeah, so with our MTSS systems, our instructional coach and principal partnership meetings, we hold those meetings monthly to improve our implementation cycles, improve our instructional leadership in the buildings, and then work to improve our implementation. So that's an ongoing effort every year as we onboard new teachers, and then as the teachers that we have on staff continue to improve that implementation. So it comes through that instructional coach and principal partnership meetings that we're doing to improve our knowledge base about the implementation with our curriculum.
Does that answer your question, Member Donnelly?
Well, it may, but I'm curious in how successful we're being with those techniques to implement the curriculum with fidelity.
And through the President to Member Donnelly, we haven't done an instructional implementation walk since the fall one, so that isn't something that we have done at this point in time to do the follow-up. We do that typically every fall to look at that pacing and time. And so that follow-up point has not been done yet to this semester.
Okay.
I'll wait my turn for another question.
Okay. Thank you, Member Donnelly. Who has not spoken yet? All right, Member, Member Lessons, go on.
This is maybe a response to Member Donnelly's question. It strikes me that this is an interesting year because we're sort of betwixt in between two different things. We have taken steps towards quite possibly adopting a new evidence-based curriculum, and yet we're still doing implementation checks of something that we may be moving beyond. And I find that could be an awkward position for, I feel like it's awkward for me as a board member, and it could be awkward for educators as well. The state is already offering letters training. The state is already offering Ufly. There are, there are tools out there that are not part of ASD's toolbox that potentially could be in the future. So I think, you know, your question is an interesting one, but, but it's also, we're at an awkward pivotal moment. So I guess that's just my, my personal response to your question. I do want to, I did want to ask, though, about, we had seven snow days in last semester. That's like eight or nine percent of the learning days that students would have had between August and December. And then on top of that, rates of chronic absenteeism are through the roof. Our kindergartners, the rates of 90% attendance are 57%. First graders are at 58%, second graders are at 63%. So of the days that school has been open, you have 40-plus percent of our youngest learners not in school all the time. I find that very challenging to imagine the growth that we want to see taking place under those circumstances when students aren't in school. I guess that's not a question. That's an outrage. That's a tirade. Thank you.
And kids, you know, parents have to get kids to school. So we've got to figure out how to encourage parents to do, make sure their kids are in school. And I think we did have that down, though, as for a deeper discussion. So it's, it's on our list for a deeper discussion. But you're absolutely right. You're absolutely right. Other questions? Coming back around, Member Donnelly?
Thank you, Madam President. I want to talk about retention. Five years ago, when I asked the question, how many of our third graders were retained? And out of over 3,000 third graders, only four were retained, held back because they hadn't achieved proper academics or other reasons. We know that if kids can't read by third grade, they're in for a lot of trouble going forward. If we're only at 40% proficiency now with our second, third graders, how are we addressing that with our new retention policy? Because I did sponsor, and the board approved, a new retention policy. Prior to that, it was just absolutely nobody ever was retained. And now it's in the best interest of the student is the standard. So how are, how are we utilizing retention at this point of view to make sure, point of time, to make sure that our kids are, are getting where they need to be before we move them on up to advanced grades?
And I, I want to introduce our new director of teaching and learning for elementary, Nicole Somerville. And she really has been tracking all of it as Alaska Reads Act and has been a critical part to the reading curriculum. So I wanted her to share what's coming with the progression, non-progression through the Alaska Reads Act.
Thank you, Member Donnelly, to the President. So the Alaska Reads Act, one of the provisions in it is that a discussion is opened up every single year that a student is not proficient in reading. The intent of the law, at least according to the presentations that I've been at, is that students, that teachers, administrators, reading experts, and parents, when a student is identified as not proficient, you would put in interventions, according to the Alaska Reads Act. You would re, continue to progress monitor them and assess them. By middle of the year, if the student is not making progress, of course, you're still going to change your interventions and add more help, but then you're going to start the discussion of whether or not a retention, they call it in the law, a progression or non-progression is appropriate. And those discussions are supposed to happen for all students that are not making their proficiency targets every single year. Now, the intent of the law is that students would only be retained once in their school experience so that you wouldn't have 14-year-old third graders, that, you know, you would continue to add interventions in place. But the law has that it's the parent's decision overall, and that if a parent chooses to not retain or to allow their child to progress to the next year, there is a provision in the Alaska Reads Act that the school district would provide summer school support, 20 hours in that year between third and fourth grade.
Again, that's forward-looking, not what we've done in the past.
Just one quick follow-up.
Sure.
Last year, I know we're in a very unique situation with the pandemic, so it may be an aberration statistically, but how many of our third graders were retained? Member Donnelly, all of us that are sitting up here are brand-new to our jobs, and we weren't here last year. And so I would have to go back and find that out for you.
We could maybe put it in Board Connect. Would that be all right, Mr. Donnelly? Board Connect?
Thank you, Madam.
All right. And I would like to just remind the board, too, you guys are asking great questions. If you could please maybe put them in writing before the meeting, that would give the staff, because, yeah, they are, y'all all are new. That's true, but it would be nice for them to have a heads-up. Mr. Jacobs?
Madam President, we were talking about the, the learning walks earlier. This is more of a House question, but we touched on it, so I figured I'd follow up. Our strategies section of the PowerPoint speaks to us during doing those in fall and winter. Is that going to happen in the semester, and we just haven't identified a date, or are we changing course?
So Nicole's saying implementation walks and learning walks are two different things. The implementation walk is what we do to go through and, and look for evidence of implementation. And the learning walks are actually a learning time for, for principals and coaches and even teachers, staff. We've discussed, we went a different route in terms of learning walks. Right now, we're doing drop-in comprehension lessons, and part of that is because we do know we have a new curriculum coming up. And so we're, we're making a shift from some of the tools that we can help provide to our staff. So the drop-in comprehension lessons is new to us this quarter because we want to start also concentrating on comprehension as we begin to familiarize ourselves with the new reading curriculum.
Okay, any other question? Did you have a follow-up, Member Jacobs?
Nope, it's all fine.
Okay. We'll come back to my right. Okay, go on, Member Lessons.
So this was not a question that I sent in ahead of time because it arose out in response to testimony for the House Education Committee on Friday, and where it was revealed that participation in the testing, by participation rates in one of our correspondence schools, one of our homeschool programs, is around 22%. That's pretty low. What is the responsibility? Do all of our schools have to test their students? I mean, we have I mean, we have charter, we have optional, we have alternative. Do they all have to take these assessments?
In a nutshell, generally, yes. But what I would say, at any point in time, a parent can opt out. Also, of course, when it becomes, and I'm speaking strictly about the state assessments, right? And so, again, parents can opt out. And then, of course, with some of our schools that may or may not be in person, there are a variety of factors that influence who comes to test because there are test security agreements and those types of things. But I would have to get more information to look into that specifically.
Does it have a follow-up?
Yeah, well, I guess the follow-up is, then, if I'm looking at Slide five, you know, when it shows percent of students tested, you know, if we're, it looks like, you know, for all grade K through two, that top line, we're testing ninety-one percent of our K through two students in this slide on page five. Is that correct? I'm sorry, I was looking at fall, winter, slightly lower, eighty-eight percent of our students.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so a pretty robust sample size overall.
And these are the ones that are happening during the year. These aren't necessarily state tests, right? So we have been finding on state tests, especially this last year at the upper grades, that we have a lot of students, parents opting out of this star. So, but that will come later.
I'm just curious, from today's presentation, there were like seven Alaska Reads Act things, requirements. Will we be updating, if the board chooses to approve that curriculum, will we be updating our implementation? Uh, Slide eight? To reflect those seven things? Some of, like, MTSS is.
Some of those things haven't been voted on yet by the state board. And once they are, then we will be updating.
But this, that will, that will impact this?
Yes, it will.
All right, thank you. Other questions? Everybody has gone that wants to, Member Donley?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just the important point that Member Lessons brought up earlier about we're in a transition here. I guess what I'm most concerned about is that we implemented the current curriculum five years ago. If we're only at seventy percent after five years, I'm worried about the future. I'm worried about what's going to happen with the new curriculum once it goes into place. How many years is it going to take for that to be implemented? We really believe in it, that it's going to be successful. We need it to be implemented more rapidly than over seventy percent after five years, or else our kiddos are not going to be meeting these challenges in our goals here.
Okay, thank you, Member Donley. Any other questions? Seeing none, hearing none, we thank you guys for your time and expertise. The next item on our agenda is C2. We're going to get a quick, for the math technical report. Dr. Bryant?
Thank you, Madam President. So we'll go ahead and move into a brief technical presentation on math proficiency. If we go to the next slide, it states that our board goal is to increase proficiency to fifty-five percent by May 2026. Today, we'll focus on interim goal 2.1, which is to increase the percentage of students in grades three through nine at or above benchmark on the MAPG Growth Assessment to sixty percent by 2023. And benchmark, just for the public's awareness, is defined as the fortieth percentile. Next slide. This is a graph formatted to how it's been in previous presentations, but you'll see historical math proficiency over time based on the spring snapshot. The dotted line represents our annual goal for students at or above benchmark. For 2023, that goal was sixty percent. The table below shows the same data and provides data on the fall and winter snapshots as well. The brown boxes show performance this school year, and the color legend identifies this percentage as being near the target. This slide disaggregates the data by individual grade level, allowing you to see if there are particular cohorts of students that are more or less proficient than the average. The average for all grades is on the top. It also provides a comparison of performance for winter versus fall of this year, as well as participation. The percentage point differences between fall and winter are the last two columns. This next slide disaggregates the data by race, ethnicity, and special populations of students, including economically disadvantaged students and special education students. It also provides a comparison of performance between winter and fall. And the bottom portion of the table cluster schools by the number below, near, and meeting the target. This presentation also has data related to interim goal 2.2, which is fall-to-fall increases in proficiency on the MAPG Growth Assessment. The goal was an increase to forty-two percent proficiency by fall 2022. On this slide that you see here, it's formatted similarly to the one earlier in the presentation. This data also includes the percentage of students at or above their predicted proficiency based on the MAPG Growth Assessment. That's a separate score that that assessment produces. The last two columns allow for a percentage point comparison of change between winter and fall on that predicted proficiency indicator. This slide is also similar to the previous one in the presentation. It disaggregates the data by race, ethnicity, and special subpopulation. Like on the previous slide, this also includes data on the percent of students scoring at or above their predicted proficiency. That's what makes this slide different than the one earlier in the presentation. And these next few slides provide an overview of next steps with regards to the implementation to improve proficiency. So on this slide, for example, it details the instructional goals and focus areas to improve math proficiency, which includes curriculum, the multi-tiered systems of support framework, and instructional strategies. The approach is a continuous loop of building teacher capacity, analyzing data, and engaging in instructional improvement cycles. And on this slide, the strategies are grouped into four major pillars, including professional learning, the multi-tiered system of supports framework, data discussions, and curriculum. And it shows the status of implementation across these major pillars. And that concludes the technical report. Our more in-depth discussion on this topic will take place at the next board meeting.
Thank you, Dr. Bryant. That will be March seventh? Is that our next board meeting? All righty, thank you. So, board members, as you review the data, please send in your questions or wonderings at that time. Okay, moving on, the agenda that brings us to our first public comment section, item D. I don't think we have any students signed up tonight. I would like to read a statement just before. Welcome to the School Board's first opportunity of the evening for a public comment. The board has set aside one-hour time slot at the beginning of the meeting for public comment. Public comments in excess of an hour will be heard at the second opportunity for public comment at the end of the meeting, or comments can be submitted in writing. During public comment, board members will not answer questions or engage in discussion with members of the public. This is the public's time to speak and the board's time to listen. The School Board welcomes the public to observe and contribute to our meetings through their comments. However, to be productive, our meetings must be structured and civil. ASD conducts public meetings under Robert's Rules of Order, which is a set of rules for orderly meetings that have been used since the eighteen hundreds. These rules require the board and the public to be civil and respectful of each other's opinions and statements. Under Robert's Rules of Order, do not attack a member or speaker's motives, no profanity or foul language. Refrain from disturbing the meeting, no cheering, applause, outbursts, or waving of signs or posters. If you have handouts that you wish to share with the board, please give them to Ms. Foster here to my left, and she will distribute them to the board member, to the board for you. As the President of the Board, it is my duty to enforce these rules of civility and decorum. As such and consistent with Robert's Rules of Order, I have the authority to rule any speaker out of order for violation of these rules and/or fail to conduct themselves in a civil manner. Additional details can be found as you come into the boardroom. There is a blue and white sheet that pretty much summarizes, goes over everything that I just shared. So with that, we are ready for our first speaker. And that, I will call two people at a time. There's two chairs here, the mics, you can turn the mic on by pressing the button with the voice. You'll see a face with a little, like a microphone coming, well, a voice box there. Alan Brown and Rosalyn Grady, please come forward. State your name and provide your testimony. I think you turned, yeah, now it's on. Welcome, Mr. Brown.
Good evening. My name is Alan Brown, and I have two children in the district. And like many of the constituents who elected you, I am a member, a military veteran. I'm speaking to you this evening to address this board's five-two decision to censor public discourse related to current or potential ASD curriculum. This board's vote set a dangerous precedent that sends the message loud and clear. It does not honor or respect the free speech rights of all citizens who have a stake in the education of this community's children. In my opinion, this board's vote in favor of censorship is an indictment. You showed your cards for everyone to see. You will never be able to undo that. This board's collective actions suggest that you have no interest in hearing or considering opinions that differ from your own and that you believe you know better than the citizens that elected you. This board's five-two vote to censor speech is a slap in the face to one of the most important constitutional rights afforded to all citizens. A publicly-elected board who cannot respect everyone's right to engage in curriculum-related public discourse clearly does not have our children's best interests at heart. Ladies and gentlemen, public discourse and truly honoring free speech is by its very nature messy. It's uncomfortable, it can be painful, it's often irrational, overly emotional, and downright dirty. But as adults, if we cannot handle a little uncomfortable civil discourse, then we have no business being part of the conversation. How can this community trust an elected body to oversee our children's education when it doesn't respect the rights of the public to freely speak their mind within this here forum? How can I trust that my two children will be allowed to speak up in class when they don't agree with something the teacher says or the book says? Will the concept of critical inquiry, which by, I might add, includes questioning and disagreement, will that be encouraged or even permitted in the classroom discussions? Or after this board's precedent of censorship, will students be silenced when they raise their ideas or opinions that counter the institutionally-approved lesson plan or textbook? Or even worse, will students simply censor themselves because they don't feel comfortable speaking up or asking tough questions? Will my fourteen-year-old daughter be ostracized for questioning or speaking out against something that she doesn't agree to in class? More importantly, will this board support her right to question? Five to two says that you won't.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. I'd like to call up Laura McNown. Ms. Grady?
Hello, everyone. My name is Rosalyn Grady White. I am the president and founder of the Alaska Coalition of BIPOC Educators. I am also a member of the Education Committee at the NAACP and a member of the Mountain View Community Council. Thank you, Madam President, and fellow School Board members for having me today, and happy Black History Month. A cool thing about today, Black History Fun Fact, since we're all here to read things, it is Nina Simone's birthday, and she is known as a musical genius. And my favorite quote from her is, "An artist's duty, as far as I'm concerned, is to reflect the times." And that is what I see in front of me as far as my School Board members are concerned and my directors to my left. We are reflecting the times. There is so much to talk about, and I would love to talk about everything, but I know I don't have enough time to get it out. So if I say something that catches your eye or any of your attention, please reach out to me. All of you know how to get in touch with me. I have, I am invested in Anchorage School District as a parent, an employee, and a community member. I have four children that are enrolled in the Anchorage School District. They go to the number-one school, in my opinion, Mountain View Elementary School, which I am proud to say is working hard to mirror a cultural, cultural, cultural relevant school. Another cool thing about our school is that the kids are in choir, basketball practice, and games, and they are undefeated, I believe. I don't think we've lost one yet. Having our first spelling bee competition in a long time this week, and we even got to skate with a two-time Olympian speed skater, Shawnee Davis. The teachers over there are awesome, and you're probably wondering how I know. Well, it's because I get to see all the hard work that they are putting in to change and make a difference in this data. But we do need the support, and we need those resources. As you know, ACBE is all about equity and equality. Equity meaning the quality of being fair and impartial, and equality meaning the state of being equal, especially in status, rights, and opportunities. We at ACBE support forward cultural, I cannot say that word, relevant change and have ideas to help implement that change. That means becoming more cultural, responsive district. My only ask of you as board and directors is that we stay focused on the needs of your teachers and your students, and maybe the community, as long as their why stays children first. Let's keep focusing on how to bring quality education to our students through curriculum, and I will send you my email.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. I'd like to call Landon Forrest Forward and Laura.
My name is Laura McNown, and I'm a special education teacher. Tonight, I'm speaking to you as an advocate for our, like, local neighborhood schools. Abbott Loop Elementary is the only neighborhood school that remained on the list to be closed. As I understand, a project management team, mainly consisting of administrative staff, is currently working out the process of closing Abbott Loop Elementary and consolidating with the neighboring schools. I am urging you to involve the Abbott Loop community frequently. Are there any additional town halls planned where the community may gain detailed information about the status quo and give input to help shape the transition? Do the receiving schools and the teachers get to voice their concerns? If so, in what type of forum may they voice their concerns and fears? Also, just like any basic business project, this consolidation needs to be evaluated for success based on defined metrics, such as cost savings, student performance, transportation, and teacher retention, et cetera. The Abbott Loop community deserves to know if consolidating with their neighboring schools was worth the trouble they had to go through. Speaking of trouble, the burden the school closure process has on schools and their communities shall not be overlooked. I have been through the wringer myself and can confirm that I experienced a lot of stress and anxiety through that time of uncertainty. Thus, research on school closures suggests that schools who have been going through the process of closure should not be considered for closing again for at least three years. Therefore, I'm proposing a three-year closure moratorium for the five schools identified for closure that are not going to be closed this year. This proposal is necessary because we have repeatedly heard from board members that schools will get closed in the near future. President Bellamy stated in a work session that she is certain that we will close schools no matter how much the BSA increases. What concerns me is that I don't know what your vision is for our neighborhood schools, if it is not to keep them open. I would like to know that this board and this administration rises to the challenge of fixing, rather than closing, public schools to make every school a school parents want to send their kids to and teachers want to go and teach. Neighborhood schools are their. Neighborhood schools are the heart of our communities. They offer continuity and stability to families who are vulnerable to disruption. I am concerned about the equity in our school landscape if we continue down this track to closing neighborhood schools. With charter schools in place that run amazing programs, we need to make sure to learn from them what's working well and improve our neighborhood schools instead of replacing them. The focus needs to be on the backbone of the system, the most inclusive setting in our communities, our neighborhood schools. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'd like to call Celeste Hodggrunden and Mr. Forth whenever you're ready. You're on. It's mine.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. First of all, I'd like to thank you all for being here today and for your dedicated service to our community. Also want to thank you for letting me speak here today. My name is Landon Forth. I'm a product of the Anchorage School District, a lifelong community member, a parent of three Anchorage School District students, and I am the president of the South Anchorage High School PTSO. I'm here to represent myself and my family and the South Anchorage High School community at large, many of whom could not be here to voice their concerns and share their personal stories with you today. I'm here to address our concerns of the 2324 budget and the projected shortfall it represents, specifically how these cuts may negatively impact our South High community. It's been announced that South is going to lose two staff members next year, one assistant principal and one administrative clerk. These are two of our valued team members, each of whom passionately serve our student body, our dedicated staff, and our successful educational programs. They positively influence the human experience of all of our students. As president of the PTSO, our board is adamantly opposed to these cuts and staffing reductions that negatively impact the students and their educational experience. We have heard many personal stories that reflect the importance of these vital staffing roles. We're concerned that these cuts will negatively affect the well-being and educational experience of those students. I've heard from many of our students, the staff, the teachers, our concerned parents, and I've discussed these concerns with our executive staff regarding these reductions. These cuts pose significant challenges to our mission of supporting the students and their education. Your job is a difficult one, no doubt, with many tough decisions to make. I'm here to ask you to keep our educational system fully funded and fully staffed. We are committed to help. We are committed to continue our campaign to impact the state legislature and lobby for full and inflation-proof funding of the Anchorage School District. Our educational system is critically important to the future of our community. We are committed to being good stewards of our program, and most importantly, we're committed to supporting the educational experience of our South Anchorage students, our staff and the parents. We ask for your support as we move forward with our mission. Let's see, we've got a couple of seconds here. So I do recognize that funding is everything, but I want to remind us all that supporting good people to do good work is really important, and doing more with less is tough. In my industry, we've been doing that for the last three years, and it definitely does have a negative impact. And these, these staff members that we're talking about losing, they have personal connections with our students, and to me, that's what's the most important. So I just ask for your help. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Forth. So Celeste Hodggrunden is calling in. I don't see her in the queue, so I'll double back. Let's have Dave Young and Robin Platt. Welcome. You have three minutes.
Thank you very much. My name is David Young and never been here before, and I'm here because I had a conversation with a third grader. She came over to our house to see our cardigan Welsh corgi puppy, and I said, "So Charlotte, are you, do you have a half hour extra of school?" And she goes, "Yeah." And then I go, "So what do you do?" And she says, "Study hall." And I gotta tell you, I had this conversation with Steve Johnson, who is, you know, you may be familiar with Steve Johnson, head of the debate team at UAA. He was as palled as I was, you know? And so when I see these, when I see these numbers up there, and I'm going, "Well..." So I needed to find out, is this across the board where they're having study hall for the half hour extra that teachers are in school? And trust me, teachers rank at the top of the list for me because my mother was a teacher, my grandmother was a teacher, my aunt was a teacher, my sister was teaching high school 33 years, master's mathematics. My brother is a professor at Montana Tech School of Mines, PhD, head of the department metallurgy. And my son's mom, who some of you may know, Peggy Brannon, was a teacher for 21 years at North Star and Cassune. So I am a, you know, a proponent of teachers, but I just can't get over the fact that if this is just a one-off thing where it's a study hall in order for, you know, to complete a lesson plan where you've missed, you know, teachers have missed seven days. And I know, you know, I know you all know about a lesson plan and the value of a lesson plan to get the students from A to Z. When you miss seven days and you make it up with a study hall, I would just shock. So I don't know if this is across the board or if it's just a one-off situation. And I would ask you guys to find, especially, you know, the superintendent, to find out, are principals actually allowing teachers to replace seven days of missed school? It would be like if you added seven days to the end and said, "Okay, all you have to do is study hall." Think about that. When they have a lesson plan and then seeing these numbers up here is shocking to me. I mean, it's shocking, you know? And so I'm just asking you, and I'd like to maybe come back in the next two weeks and find out if that's what's going on. Are they replacing the half hour at the end of school with a study hall? And that's all I have to say. It's the only reason I'm here today, you know? And I want to thank you very much for all your time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Young. I'd like to call Jay McDonald and Ms. Platt, whenever you're ready.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you. And I also have been watching the folks, the majority of you, while there's been these few public testimonies. And you're looking at me, and you were looking at them, and you were having eye contact with the speakers. And I personally appreciate that very much because that tells me that you're listening and that you're engaged, and you might be interested in what folks are saying. So thank you. Thank you very much for that. I truly do appreciate that. I'm gonna just read an email here. It's regarding a book mentioned at the school board meeting. It's dated Thursday, October 27 of 2022, and it was sent at 10:27 a.m. Thank you for the email, Becky. I did hear the testimony, and I want you to know our admin team discussed it. I am still standing firm and resolute to never be party to banning books, burning books, or limiting the information that informs our society writ language. I will always stand by to defend the flag and the people's rights to also burn that same flag in protest. I believe that the defense of those rights and the education of our citizens is true patriotism, and it is signed. As always, go Bears, from the Bartlett Principle.
Thank you, Ms. Platt. I'd like to call Jesse Becker, Becker, Becker. Mr. McDonald, whenever you're ready.
Yeah, thank you. So my name is Jay McDonald. Hello, friends. So it started off when I was asking questions about the policy that ASD has under their diversity, equity, and inclusion push, that they've been transitioning the kids in schools and hiding it from parents. First, they were telling me that it's not happening, and the materials that I was asking for don't exist. So I came in and I read, "This book is gay." The response from the district was to say, "Well, that was an old book, and they lost all the copies, so it was no longer an issue." So I read "Let's Talk About It," which is a brand-new book that they had just placed in the libraries right before I came in to read it. Their response to that was to say, "Well, we never let kids see that book. The kids never touched it. It was just for the staff." So on that note, I have something called Beyond Magenta today. I'm going back to October 11, 2022. I filed a FOIA request, and these emails got caught in the FOIA. It said, "Teacher at Stellar talking to librarian. She says, 'These are option books from my censorship class.'" It's an English class that they're teaching. "All Boys Aren't Blue and Beyond Magenta would be great picks if other high schools have them." So this is a teacher talking about using these materials as curriculum in the class. And the librarian responds, "I need to do more research and buy a few of these. Beyond Magenta looks like a great fit for our readers, so let me know if you have recommendations. When do you teach this class? If I act fast, I could use them." After this exchange, it showed up in the catalog at Stellar, confirming that they actually did use this in class. So let's take a look at what this curriculum has in it. This is the one where the person, they go in graphics, like, there's a lot of stories in this book. Here's an example. "I was sexually mature. What I mean by sexually mature is that I knew about sex from six up. I used to kiss other guys in my neighborhood, make out with them, and perform oral sex on them. I liked it. I used to love oral, and I touched their you-know-whats. We were really young, but that's what we did. I was making out with girls, too. I used to love making out with the girls because everybody thought it was cool. Everyone was encouraging me. Look, Frank's not gay. He's making out with a girl." They wanted to know how the hell I learned to kiss like that. I didn't know how I learned. It was pretty weird. Guys used to hit on me, perverts and pedophiles. I'd like, I see guys giving me a look. It kind of creeped me out. They text themselves, saying, "Come here, sweetie. Something told me not to go, and I ran away." There's a bunch of passages in this, oh, there's a bunch of passages in this book where they're promoting surgical procedures on kids. "All my trans friends with vaginas look beautiful. They got everything they wanted. It would be so great if I could get an operation. If I could get my vagina, it would be great to get that over with and live my life. I feel like I'm not truly living my life yet. I'm living at 50%. If I had my surgery, I would live it to the fullest." So this, this whole book is full of that material. This is in an English class, and under Alaska state law...
Thank you, Mr. McDonald. Let's see, I'd like to call Sherry Streisak and Mr. Thatcher, whenever you're ready.
Do I push the button, or is it already on?
It's on.
Okay. Thank you, school board members. I'd like to hear what the lady said before me. It's really great that you actually can look at us and see us and talk to us and have us available here. Thank you, distinguished members. Superintendent Jarrett, some of my statements can be pretty obvious, like, "Public school is a partnership between the parents and students and those entrusted to educate them. The school board is elected to ensure the school district sets goals which build students' academic skill sets, such as math, science, speech, physical education, and music. These skills ensure students perform and function as a valued member of the workforce, whatever, regardless of their chosen trade. The teachers who provide the education which focuses in these areas produce students who contribute to national and local economies, a stable workforce, build solid communities, and create beautiful cities and homes." There continues to be, you know, what's interesting is our school district has made national and world news with the censorship of Mr. McDonald, Fox News, and all these other outlets. It's very interesting that the feedback has been very positive, and as far as not supporting this small group which continues to invade our school, small group continues to push detrimental and confusing ideology of gender fluidity. This material has no value, no educational value, period. I mean, when you work left or right next to someone, you know, you're not really interested what they are. You're more interested, can you get the job done? That's about functionality. Nor are you concerned whether the mechanic identifies as something else unless he thinks it's your automobile. Okay? I may go to McDonald's, but that doesn't make me a Happy Meal. So this is where we need to focus, refocus our education. The board has addressed initially the availability of offensive material for checkout. A list of the pornographic and offensive material is available, and this is a purchase to maintain by our school district, and it's available. None of this material falls into the category of education, none of it. This material should not be available in our schools. Some of this material is actually illegal, according to Alaska State Statute 6111123. Look it up. And it says, "We're going to control this to make sure that only certain people can check it out." It's like keeping cocaine in your house and having a police kids do not touch. Okay? That is a detrimental thing to do. You all know it. Nobody would, nobody, nobody sane would be, would have that available. But again, although this, and this material actually offends many people with values, family values, spiritual values, Islam, Judaism, Christianity. So this is pretty significant, going against the public trust. But you guys are at a, you guys are at a chasm now. You have a great opportunity to change this and to upend this and stop this because it's not only illegal and it's destructive, it's wicked, and you have an opportunity to change this. So I would encourage you guys, do the right thing.
Thank you, Mr. Thatcher. I'd like to call Robert Kalik, Kalik, and Ms. Streisak, whenever you're ready. Three minutes.
All right. A concerned parent from Eagle River High School student wrote to the assistant principal. "Last night, our daughter came to us with a passage from the novel Gilgamesh. Someone from the school district authorized this book into our child's and all children of the ASD hands. Needless to say, my wife and I were both shocked at the content. We felt that this is absolutely inappropriate for high school students to be required to read. We were angry, and we weren't warned about the passage from the book, or given an option on whether we felt it was appropriate for our daughter. We completely felt that our rights as parents were usurped by someone who feels that this is imaginary, is acceptable. We realize nothing can be done to reverse this damage at this point. Neither is fine fault with the teacher, but we are very upset with who have decided this book was acceptable." The principal had responded, "Gilgamesh is indeed an ASD-approved text for English, and I have seen it for years. What was changed this year is that the particular translation suggested for purchase because it was more accessible to students. What happened was is the new book was introduced later on in the school year, and that's when this had applied. We do apologize for this happening." This email was back from 2013. In response, Governor Sean Parnell had addressed Senator Begich, telling him that we do support President Obama's efforts to write nationwide education standards. However, we are concerned that, let alone any international-appointed board, setting standards for our local school districts because I believe that greatly diminishes parents' involvement and opportunity for our children. Earlier, Ms. Bellamy stated that a program will be put in place in the future to delineate which books are available to students versus staff. My question to all of you, why would staff need access to a sexually explicit material when it is obviously not appropriate for our children in the school? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Let's see, John Cunningham and Mr. Kalik, whenever you're ready. You have three minutes.
Okay, I don't, all right, this thing is on. All right. So my name is Robert Colak. I'm from, I'm from Barrow, Alaska. I've got two students inside Anchorage School District schools. I take my kids to school. I pick them up after school, you know? We maintain a safe family for bringing them to school. But one thing that did catch my attention was this Anchorage School District Compliance EEO Office form that I've never seen when I've enrolled three or four students. I've got other kids that are older in different school districts, but enrolling my two current children that are in school, one is in middle school and one's a senior, but I've never seen this form here that says the Plan to Address Title IX Gender Issues. And number three, Preferred First Name, that's kind of disturbing. And Preferred Pronouns is kind of disturbing to me, but one of the more disturbing things is at the bottom of this form, it's got, "I am in agreement with the above plan." Students, student-employee signature and the principal signature. I don't, I don't see no spot here on this form, an Anchorage School District form, where there should be acknowledgement for the parents. That's, that's really, really confusing to me. And I've got a child that's getting ready to be in school, and she goes to speech therapy twice a week, occupational therapy twice a week because she's got a speech disability. And this kind of stuff that surfaced on social media in these last, this last week or so that caught my attention is super disturbing to me. I just want to know, because she, my daughter, she's five years old, and she can't... and she can't really tell you very many things about like her day. You can't have no real conversation with my five-year-old because of her speech delay. How will this kind of stuff affect somebody with a speech delay? I'm, I'm kind of frightened to, I mean, like I'm already frightened for her to be going into a public school um, just because of her speech disability. But with an added component like this where things are happening without parental consent is um, super disturbing to me. Um, I, I, I don't know. I, I just don't understand. I, I, I just needed to express my concern in this community that I'm a part of. I'm also a um, youth basketball coach for middle school age students, so.
Thank you very much, sir. I'd like to call John Cunningham. I'm sorry, John is here. Uh, Shannon, is it Savage? They're rich.
They're rich.
Thank you.
Thank you kindly.
All right, Mrs. Cunningham.
Hi, my name is John Cunningham. Uh, I live right up the road. I graduated from Diamond High School on uh, May the 25th, 2000. Barely, yeah, it was close. My mother and my recruiter dragged me over the finish line and several of my teachers as well. I think we can all agree that at the very least, in some of your minds, some of this stuff we're talking about as far as curriculum and books is borderline. We've seen, we've seen some emails from principals, librarians, going to their administrators, talking about the questionable nature of some of it. All the way over to, well, from questionable to downright destructive and kind of scary. Someone talked about the culture of the time, right? Culture belongs to the family as far as I'm concerned. A culture should not be solely or even in part in the hands of educators. I mean, if you want to look to a good example of how things are done, and they're not all religious, but private institutions all over the country do a pretty darn good job of educating children. I'm sure they'd be willing to share with your work group there how, how to get things done. Their stats are rather, well, they're inverted or better. The results speak for themselves as far as reading, writing, arithmetic, those sort of things go. Um, now I'm not trying to tell you guys how to do your job, but I figure you can probably talk to them about it. They seem to know what they're doing. As far as the material goes, you do have a choice at this point. And of course, I can go on the website and follow that. And I'm not here to address a specific piece of material. I'm just here to tell you, you know, you can be on the side that's trying to get this into kids' hands and whether or not you're doing it on purpose, I don't know. But to do so without the family's input, without the parents tracking it, doesn't seem right. I figure anyone that would hurt a kid in that way probably shouldn't be working in this kind of field here. These kids, they didn't sign up for this, to be part of this culture war. To be pawns in it. They signed up to learn the Rs. Mrs. Masner, he taught me in fourth grade brutally. I probably made it there too. But, you know, I also want to encourage you, I know it's hard work. You got a lot of people coming up here probably writing you nasty emails, saying all sorts of crazy things to you. But at the end of the day, you can be on the side that protects the children from the stuff that doesn't belong in schools and pushes the stuff that does. Or you can be on the side that seemingly pushes familial destruction. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'd like to call Samuel Schilling. I think that's correct. And um, whenever you're ready, ma'am. Ms. Sayerbitch.
Close enough.
Okay.
Hi, thank you for having me. Um, I'm here on the behalf of my two boys. I have two young boys, um, they're in elementary school on the south side. And I'm here because I'm a mother and that's why I'm here. I'm here in defense of all children, especially including my own. Because my other, my mother instincts reside within me for any child. Cause I'm a mother, I'm a mother first. Um, it's been brought to my attention recently that there is some really disturbing material available for my kids. And as an unconditional loving mother for my children, which I feed a hundred meals a day too, because they're two boys. And I take them to karate practice and I get up early in the morning and I make sure that their lunches are done and I take them to the doctors and I, and I do everything that I should do as a loving, unconditional loving mother. And it's really scary to me and I'm afraid for them. I'm scared. Um, what's coming next? And I heard you mention the rules that we abide by since 1800. And that kind of shook me up a little bit and I was thinking, wow, we sure stand strong by those rules, don't we? You mentioned them yourself. And I sit here and I think, God, the way our morals and the times have changed. And are they for the better? And are they benefiting our kids? Are they benefiting my kids? Are they benefiting any of your children? And I worry for them. And my biggest concern is, how can I protect them? What can I do to make sure that whatever propaganda is going on here? Whatever's happening here? One, how did I not know about it? And two, how do I keep them safe from it? What do I do? My options are getting very slim. I know that it's just this room full of eyes on you and wondering, well, what's being done about this? But there is a really very, very important set of eyes on you. And it's not the eyes in this room. So whatever the propaganda is, whatever your intentions are, my kids are so important to me as to all these parents in this room right now that this will not work. This will not fly and this is unacceptable. And I will not stand by it and you guys cannot have my children. And they will not be subject to this. In my home, my job is to protect them. If something like this is being given to my children and I am not aware of it, there's a problem with that. If my children are being exposed to something that could harm them or that can put them in a place in their life where they're confused or can put them in a place in their life where they don't know where to go or they have no understanding, there's a problem with that. I'm here because I need everybody in this room as well as the school board, school board to be aware. Thank you for your time.
And thank you very much. Uh, I'd like to call Christine, is it Gagel, Gagel? I'm sorry, Christine. Um, Mr. Schilling, whenever you're ready.
Thank you. My name's Samuel Schilling. I've got three boys that are in a, well, were in the school district and still are in the school district. And uh, tonight's testimony, it's been going on from a lot of parents. It brings up a lot of concerns, a lot of concerns that's going on in this district. And some of them are what's being presented in what the district's education, what their academic material is. And some of the things that are bringing to my attention is what's being groomed of them. My three boys have a very unique personality. All three of them are completely different. Anything from a hundred miles an hour to, well, power animal being a sloth. Um, me being in their lives at all times. The biggest thing with them is that with me interacting with them on a day-to-day basis, that is my judgment call on how I would like to try to see my boys grow personality-wise. The thing that I entrust in the education system here in Anchorage School District is to make sure that they're able to read, write and do math. Help me out with all the other things that I used to struggle with when growing up and the education system wasn't as advanced as it is now. But my job as a father and as a parent is to make sure that I help them develop personality-wise. Help them be who they want to be, whoever it is that they want to be. And the school district is there to help me to make sure that they have all the basic functions in order to proceed in with life so that that way they can grow and that they can learn to succeed in society. A lot of things that have been coming up, a lot of, um, a lot of disgusting things that have been coming up. Some of the things that have been coming up, that are coming out of the school district with this agenda that's been pushing through that are very concerning and have detrimental costs on my children and many other people's childrens. And some of them, a lot of people aren't aware of and they're not witnessing yet. But I've been witnessing them. With my three boys, one of the things that I've noticed with a lot of other families, because we let them interact with many children within the city and even outside the city. And one of the things that I'm noticing with this kind of propaganda going on is the boys have questions. Other families that do give into some of these, uh, they answer some of these questions and the way they answer it is kind of goes along with the school board. And some of their children's behavior afterward is very scary to the point that almost sexual harassment, sexual misconduct with each other because these children are confused. And now I have to protect my children. And then when I learned where the basis of this is all coming from is it's coming from the school district, confusing children. And this will grow up to where we get adults end up becoming anywhere between criminals, rapists, murders because they're confused of them, this behavior. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'd like to call Bruce Walden. Uh, Ms., is it Gagel?
It's Google.
Google. It looks like an A on my sheet, I'm sorry.
I thank you all for allowing us. I'm grateful that in our country, we still get to talk publicly. Really grateful for that. I'm a mom of seven and a grandmother of 30. And I'm also a teacher by passion and practice. I have read excerpts from the book, Let's Talk About It. I couldn't handle more than excerpts, honestly. At my age, with all my life experience and I've been through a lot, I found that book positively defiling. Um, was, it's unconscionable what's in that text or in the text of that book. Now, I know that's been put on the, it's a faculty book, but what on earth does faculty need that for in a public school setting? And how is it going to be kept from children? That's gravely concerning to me. I have 12 and a half years of experience volunteering in one of our state prisons and I can tell you from firsthand experience that there are people serving very long sentences, 35 years, for actually doing less than what was described and encouraged in this book for children to do to each other or submit to having other adults do. I can't describe to you how upsetting that was. I couldn't believe I was reading it in a children's book and last of all, it had been found in a school. Um, I have here an email, Bartlett Librarian, explaining that this kind of material is factual, that it has a lot of facts in it. And it's teaching safety. I just explained it isn't doing that. And then, and then her next paragraph, she says, uh, we have numerous fiction books describing sexual acts, both heterosexual and gay. Where would we draw the line on how explicit the book should be or not be? And I say, how about some morals to help you define that? At my age, I found that book to be way beyond the pale. Line should have been drawn like, that should have never even made it close to a school building, anywhere. Um, so the question about facts is immaterial, given the content. The Alaska Watchman on 217 had an article that exposed that the Anchorage School District parents are to have no role in the official document that establishes a gender plan for children. That's outrageous. The gentleman, both of people before me expressed that. I, my concern is drug addiction happens with kids experimenting and that's what sexual addiction starts with as well. And I certainly don't want Anchorage School District to be fostering aberrant sexual addiction. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, Mr. Walden, and then we'll go online with Ms. Celeste Hodge-Brown.
All right, it appears that I am on. Madam President and Board Members, glad to see you. I don't know any of you, so nothing that I'm going to say is directed at anybody here. And I'll try to be very nice, but I don't, I, I speak from the heart, so we'll just go there. Um, my background, I, I was a teacher. I actually taught at the Teachers College in Iowa for a couple of years. That was a really neat experience. It's a, University of Northern Iowa is the traditional uh, Teachers College there. And I got a pretty unique perspective there. What is more, my military job, I was an instructor for 15 years of my military career. And whereas if a teacher teaches someone something wrong, well, shame on them, you know? If I teach them wrong, they die. They die and they get blown up into little bitty pieces. So I take uh, teaching very seriously. When I look at Alaska's school system in general, we have to be honest at some point, say we're failing. And I'm not saying that to be mean, I'm saying it because I love our people and I want better for them. Regardless of what, what graph you use, we're not really doing that hot. We could do better. But I happen to believe that we can and we must. But going back to the curriculum, uh, and the things that have been mentioned here, it's a great mystery to me why we are teaching little children in elementary school about sex, period, at all. Uh, I had a friend, I have a friend, I haven't seen her here, so I, I won't mention her name. But at another meeting at the city, she said this stuff should not be being taught to children. And then she's looked at me and said, and by the way, I'm a lesbian. It's not about straight, gay, any of that. It's about, this is inappropriate for little children. It is inappropriate and it mustn't be tolerated, folks. Uh, like Madam just said a moment ago, this is where the perversion starts that winds people up in prison. I have a cousin who is going to come up here pretty soon and uh, his thing is busting child molesters. He's real good at it. He don't even have to do anything and they come to him. This is where it starts. Kids get curious, we all did that. I remember when I was a kid, I remember when I was a, a young kid, you know, get hit in that age where you start getting curious, put the wrong material out there? You just bred a molester. You just bred a rapist. That's where it starts, ladies and gentlemen. This is unacceptable, this being pushed on our children at a very tender age. I'm a grandfather, all my kids have graduated. Thank God, they've all done quite well. They're doing well in life. I have two grandsons, hopefully a whole bunch more coming down the line so I can spoil them, hand them back to their parents. But uh, bottom line, our children deserve better than this. Those of us who have been to combat, like my brother that spoke earlier, we fought for better than this and we're not getting it. I think we've been short-changed. Our country's been given up. We got to get it back. We start here, in my state, in my country, Alaska, is where we start fixing it. Thank you very kindly.
Thank you very much, sir. And now we'll go online. Uh, Ms. Celeste Hodge-Brown, uh, star six to unmute.
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you. You have three minutes.
All right, thank you, Madam Chair, for this opportunity to testify. My name is Celeste Hodge-Brown and I am President and CEO of the Alaska Black Caucus. The Alaska Black Caucus champions the lives of black people in the areas of health, economics, education and justice. I wish to speak tonight on the topic of honesty and integrity. You know, at the, the last Anchorage School Board meeting, I understand a member of the public brought a book which was checked out from our local Lusac Municipal Library and shared some pretty alarming comments that were fearful to many. I received emails and texts from parents who immediately were ready for battle. To this day, I'm still trying to understand why this individual associated terms in his testimony like diversity, equity and inclusion. I, I'm still trying to understand that. But after finishing his full three minutes of public testimony, he continued to perpetuate this narrative on social media. And here's the important point that I, I wish to make. And, and that is, after the um, emails that I received from parents of concern and phone calls and text messages, I thoroughly researched the matter. And I learned the truth is very different than what was shared. First of all, I learned this book was never accessible to students in any ASD library. And for the ASD was never used to develop and implement district-wide classroom curriculum. Information documenting and proving the truth was publicly available and in plain sight. Unfortunately, however, for some reason, the testifier made no effort to fact-check the baseless allegations prior to speaking and has apparently made no effort to apologize or walk back his misinformation. You know, in the wake of this false information, multiple articles were written, which many of us know about and which appear to have been intended to perpetuate some misinformation. Personal attacks and threats against teachers, librarians, the school board and ASD administrative staff have occurred. Even worse, from my understanding, the APD reported ASD schools were receiving bomb threats, which were thankfully investigated without incident. Let me- Let me be clear, our teachers, support staff, librarians, and school board should not be subjected to this abuse. They have enough, as we all know, on their plates already. I also learned there is a dedicated and clear process to challenge any book, which any member of the community finds concerning. The truth matters. And anyone fearful of improving our community and increasing diversity, equity, and inclusion should take a moment to consider why. And by the way, happy Black History Month to everyone. I look forward to the day when the AP African-American course is being taught, as well as-
Thank you very much. Your time is over. Thank you. Okay, that concludes the first hour of, uh, pub, the hour of public testimony. We have no one left to sign up. We got through everyone. So that brings us to our, uh, item E, which is our consent agenda.
Madam President, if I might, I'd like to pull, um, ASD memorandum number 106, Preliminary Financial Plan, before we move to approve the remaining items.
Okay, so we will move item E4 under F, F1. Okay?
And absent any other individuals wishing to pull a consent agenda item.
Member Donley.
Um, Madam Chair, I'd move to pull memorandum 107 from the consent agenda.
Okay, we'll move item E5 to F2.
That said, Madam President, I would move to approve the consent agenda as amended.
Hey, is there, is there a second? Uh, moved and, moved and, oh, wait a minute, let me back up. We have, uh, we have items, the agenda, the, the motion is to approve, moved in second to approve, with, uh, moving items E4 and E5 to F1 and F2 under action items. Right, can we vote, please? Is there any opposition to the motion to approve with those two? We're not seeing any opposition, so I think, um, hearing and seeing no opposition, uh, the agenda, the consent agenda is approved, minus those two items, which were moved under action. Okay, so we will now vote on, oh, we've already voted, I'm sorry, we're, we're good. So now we're going to, I'm sorry. Okay. Take a second, I will. All right, so now, um, that brings us to item F1, which is, uh, let's see, the financial plan? Uh, Member Jacobs.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. Just had a couple of questions, um, that came through, well, one question that came through via email, I was hoping staff could speak to. Um, through Dr. Bryant, um, we specifically heard from, um, a principal who asked for clarification regarding, um, a loss of security personnel. Um, I was hopeful administration could walk through how they, um, allocate those safety staff, uh, for the board's identification.
Thank you, uh, through the President to Member Jacobs. That's a great question, uh, that's a factor of the metric-based staffing allocation that the board approves each year in the budget book. Uh, so there is more detail on how exactly that works, um, and I believe in the fir-, I had the page number written down, but perhaps, uh, in the, I forget which, oh, in that, that little pamphlet actually goes through exactly how we allocate staff. Um, for example, PTR, um, that's a component of the staffing model, where teachers are distributed to schools based on a ratio of students to parents. Um, other, uh, other, uh, positions that are allocated based on these metrics include the security personnel. So for example, for high school, uh, the ratio is 450 students to one. So I do want to be very clear about how this works, um, because it wasn't an arbitrary decision as to which school would not get this, uh, position and which would. Uh, we're really trying to be consistent, um, with our staffing model, just to ensure fairness to our schools. And of course, there are models that other districts have where there's a process to perhaps review extenuating circumstances to allocate a position based on facts or data or other factors. Um, it looks like with our current staffing model that ASD has been using for however long, it doesn't have that nuance. And I have spoken, um, to union leadership about interest and talking about how to get there, but right now, we really just ran our number of students and, uh, we're being consistent with the staffing model.
So, uh, and Madam President, can I follow up?
Follow up, yes.
Um, so in this case, um, Diamond High School is one of the two schools, I think, that lost a security staff. They actually gain students year over year, but our, um, them losing a security staff actually brings us in line with the guideline that the board approves every year, is that right?
So correct, the staffing model for general funds is based on the metrics that we outlined in the budget book, um, security personnel, and I don't know the specific Diamond situation, but I'm just speaking to all the positions, uh, that fall under that general fund staffing model would be impacted by a change in enrollment. And in some cases, a school gains enrollment, in which case they gain an additional teacher, perhaps a counselor, et cetera. But that's what's happening at the campus level with regards to staffing.
Did you have a follow-up?
Uh, no follow-up, but another question.
Okay, let's see if any, anybody else have budget questions? Okay, we'll swing back. Did you have a question, Member Donley?
Well, I have, um, something I'd like to talk about.
Okay, so we're just doing, I'll come back to you, okay? Follow-up, Member, um, Jacobs.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. So, a question, again, a question for Dr. Bryant. Um, I think multiple members of this board, I remember specifically Member Lessons and myself, have expressed interest in how we might, um, reduce costs associated with the education center here in this building. Um, the board hasn't taken official action to vote on any sort of plan to either explore what our options are after the lease expires in 2025, um, or, um, something in between, whether it be, you know, continue that relationship. Is administration, uh, does administration need board guidance at this point to formally explore ways to reduce costs of, that are associated with this campus in particular?
Uh, thank you through the President to Member Jacobs. This superintendent doesn't need any further direction. I understand that there is, uh, interest across multiple members of the board to look into this. And of course, uh, the administration is interested in exploring ways to reduce the cost of the lease, whether it's a lease that is lower in dollar value, or perhaps an alternative, uh, location for ed center staff. Um, at this point, we have limited options in terms of buildings that, um, we're, you know, leasing that are owned by the city, um, but we're certainly open in exploring different options, and then coming to the board with more information as it becomes available.
Okay?
Thank you.
Okay, question, Member Lessons?
Thank you. I, I guess I wanted to put things into perspective here for this budget. Um, my understanding that currently we're in FY23, and we've allocated this year more than $56 million in federal relief funds to maintain status quo levels of pupil teacher ratio, the PTR. And if you look at the FY23 budget book, it, it does at one point say that's like offsetting what would have been a PTR increase of 10 this year. So we used our federal relief funds to, to hold that down. And I've started adding up the money that we are using to balance our budget, $16 million in one-time funds, almost $20 million in the last of our federal relief funds, and about $29 million in our fund balance. And that is, um, when I thought back to one of our November or December work sessions, when we got sort of the terrible menu of options, we could increase the PTR, uh, by five for $32 million. We're, I just wanted to clarify that this year again, we're preventing an offset of a plus 10 PTR by using all of the savings that we can. And yet we still have to cut things like security guards. Um, we're cutting 14 custodians because we're giving up on the prospect of hiring them. Um, I just, I'm trying to put, put our, the resources question into a little bit of context, and I'm angry, I'm just angry and frustrated.
We all are, it's very frustrating.
So am I correct in saying that we're essentially offsetting a PTR increase of 10 by using all available funds?
Based on the current budget.
So, uh, through the President to Member Lessons, it is correct that the only structural change, uh, with very few exceptions that we're making with this budget, is the PTR adjustment. The vast majority of dollars, uh, we use one-time funds, including SIR funds, to get to where we're at, which means that we're going to be in a very difficult position this time next year as well, unless there's some sort of structural change that we make here at the board, or, uh, let's say the, the funding model changes at the state level. Um, we are in a dire situation.
Thank you. Okay, so not seeing any more questions. Uh, Member Donley, I'll come back to you.
Thank you, Madam President. So Madam President, this budget includes about $30,000 for membership for the Alaska Association of School Boards. And in the past, I've, I've expressed my concern that Anchorage students are not fairly represented, uh, on this organization. Um, currently Anchorage has five delegates, but if you compare the voting power of our students to students in the smaller school districts, it's as much as 740 times per student who, they have more voting power than our students do. And if you go to like the next largest school district in the state, um, they still have more than two times the voting power and representation with this organization. I've talked about this for five years, um, no, no revisions or changes seem to be coming forward from the Alaska Association School Boards to give students in Anchorage a fair representation, uh, which I, they clearly are not getting, when it's 740 times the difference in their voting power against them. Um, also concerning is that the organization takes positions that are clearly against the interest of Anchorage taxpayers. Um, they've advocated, um, the, uh, they've opposed the formation of local government throughout Alaska, so that all communities would be required to contribute something towards the cost of their local schools. About 20% of the area of Alaska contributes absolutely nothing towards their local schools, no local tax, tax contribution at all. It's all paid for by the federal and the state government. Um, they've opposed increasing the minimum number of students to have a state-funded school, that's directly in opposing the interests of Anchorage taxpayers. They've refused our, to support our efforts in getting a new district cost study completed, and that's one of this board's priorities. And they seem to have also opposed parental consent for surveys, uh, for personal information of students. They, they actually have a, a resolution and advocates for change in that statutory requirement. So, um, since I do not think these things lend ourselves to wanting to be a membership of this particular organization anymore, I would move amendment number one to delete the $30,000 a year, uh, membership fees from the budget for the Alaska Association of School Boards.
The motion is to delete the National School Board Association, uh, the Alaska Association of School Boards and NBA, NVSA, I'm sorry? Can you state your motion again, and just see if we get a second? Oh, you do have it? Okay. I need to see it. Yeah, just one minute. She's going to put it up. Delete the dues for the Alaska Association of School Boards, that is the motion. Is there a second?
Second for discussion.
Uh, moved in second to, uh, amendment number one, alerts us that there are others to come. Um, amendment number one is to delete from the budget, delete, uh, the Alaska School Board Association dues. It's been moved, and so now, discussion, Member Lessons?
I wanted to share the powerful voice that AASB can, can and does have, um, and in fact, deeply amplified ASD priorities over the past three months. Back in November, uh, in a convention hall filled with delegates from across the state, uh, Anchorage School Board member Andy Holloman brought to the floor, um, the proposal to advocate increase in the BSA for no less than $860. And the entire ballroom full of school board members from across the state raised their hands, whatever their voting power might have been, 70 to zero, and agreed that that was a priority that the entire AASB would back. Their other priorities include retention, recruitment of educators and staff, which aligns with our priorities, as well as student wellness and safety. So I just, um, I have been deeply grateful for the AAS, this is me personally, AASB's leadership, um, over the past few months. I think that the concept of a substantial-based student allocation gained a great deal of traction from the organization's ability to advocate at statewide level, and I appreciate the position that the Anchorage School District has within that board, even though I have been frustrated by our five votes, uh, for other issues, because sometimes there is a deep urban and rural divide. Uh, I think that in the end, the benefit of being a part of the organization, having a chance to have some say, uh, outweighs sometimes a little disgruntlement.
Thank you, Member Lessons. Uh, Member, um, Holloman?
Um, yeah, I would add that AASB is not a legislative organization, and it's not there to provide that perfect representation. It is there for a place for all school boards to be able to talk to each other and discuss these issues. Um, I don't get the feeling that, that they're anti-Anchorage, but, yeah, they are expressing what they see as their best interest, same as Anchorage does. If we really did have proportional representation, um, in essence, there wouldn't be much reason for us to talk to them, and us and Fairbanks could just decide what we wanted to do. We didn't have to spend all that time and discussion and whatnot. I, there is a call between rural Alaska and urban Alaska, and I think the real question is, does Anchorage want to contribute to helping that go away, or would we like to make it bigger? And to be sure, when we, I think any statewide organization that has chapters all over the state faces the same situation. Anchorage is a natural heavyweight because of our size, because of our numbers. Um, it may not be a, a bad thing for us to learn to tolerate that, um, so that those voices get heard. I would agree with Member Lessons that quite often, we find ourselves all in agreement as educators, as people trying to have the best district as we can. It's valuable for this organization to exist and to have the power it has, uh, and I, I think it would be a sad thing if Anchorage were to withdraw a membership.
Thank you. Um, Member Jacobs, and then Higgins.
Yeah, Madam President, just to, I didn't want to interrupt Member Holloman's comments because it wasn't urgent, but, uh, I guess as a point of order, we need to formally move the memorandum 106, which we haven't done yet, and get a second to that, um, otherwise this amendment's out of order, so I can-
I thought we, yeah, Andy.
Andy.
Andy, uh-
Right, I'm talking about the, uh-
Oh, the-
The superintendent-
It was, there was no opposition to it, to the motion to-
Madam President, just to, just to, just to make sure we're on the same page, I pulled the, um, memorandum 106 from the consent agenda to an action item. When we move action items, we read them into the record, and then have a motion to approve, and then a second, that was not done in this case.
Okay.
So, uh-
All right, point of order, uh, well taken.
So I think we moved in 106. So I will, with-
Let's do it, let's just do it the right way for the record.
Yeah, for the record, um, I move to approve ASD memorandum 106, Preliminary Financial Plan. It is the recommendation of the administration that the board approve the fiscal year 2023, 2024 preliminary budget.
Okay.
Second.
Moved in second to approve memorandum number 106, which is the Preliminary Financial Plan. Uh, do we, uh, now, Member Donley?
Now that the main motion is formally before us-
We have your amendment.
Yeah.
Yeah. So he's now moving amendment number one, which was second by, uh, Member Holloman. So I think we're back on track?
Seconded again, just a second.
All right, thank you. I think we're back on track. Thank you, uh, Member Jacobs. All righty, I think, uh, Member Higgins-
Yeah, thank you.
On the amendment.
Yeah, I, um-
The motion.
Yeah, I, I appreciate AASB, and I understand that the interests throughout the state are different. When we were advocating for additional money for the BSA, there was one community out there advocating that the PFD was more important to the community members than BSA, and it was kind of odd, but every community in the state's different, and they have different expectations. A number of people who are- The number of people who are in poverty drops with the P F D, and they're, and they're paying so much for fuel and so much for this, and they're saying that's it. Heating the house and heating everything else is more important. So we all have some different views, and I know that's kind of upsetting sometimes. But what I like about A A S B is that they support and they promote what the N S B A says. And that is that the role of the school board is to be the voice of the public. We are supposed to provide direction to the administration, and we're supposed to hold them accountable. There's accountability issue. I like that role. I like that role better than the role of the Council of Great City Schools. I think it's very big, uh, and very important, and they do a good job of advocating that. I know we're gonna have people throughout the state that take different positions than we have, and they're looking out for the best interests of the kids in their area because they want more funds, and if we get a larger percentage of the funds, they get less. It's a win-lose situation from their perspective, and I understand that. And while it's frustrating, we should be fighting for everybody. And the Anchorage School District has, in the past, supported legal actions by small school districts where there was inadequate funding issues, and we took the position to support them anyway because we said all kids are important, and I respect that. I'm proud of that issue. But I really support what A A S B stands for in supporting that role of the N S B A. You've been through it, Mr. Donley, where what is the role of the board? And when do we challenge this, or when do we challenge that? The board today is more active than when I first got on it. I like that. Give the A A S B credit for advocating that type of role. So I would not want to see that funding cut. I wouldn't want to cut the funding in Council of Great City Schools because they're great for artists. Uh, there were benefits to everything, and there were some disadvantages to everything. But all in general, that the activity of the board, we all have to listen to the public. We need to represent the public, the, the students, the staff, everyone, and to take our directions and to lead directions rather than just take them. So I'm just, I'm gonna vote against it for that reason, but I appreciate the issues you're raising. No matter what organization you got, you got that issue of everybody voting their own self-interest. I understand, but I don't want to kill a powerful tool in the process, and that's why I'm gonna support the funding.
Any other comments? Member Jacobs.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. Just to, um, I guess a point to clarify, um, one of the things I, I think the maker of the amendment indicated was that A A S B doesn't support a district cost factor study. And this was something I looked into last year after a similar amendment was made. That actually isn't true. One of the resolutions that's passed, um, and associated in the book of resolutions that A A S B gives to lawmakers is a, a new district cost factor study. So I, I can't speak and I won't necessarily agree with, you know, the, the underlying argument that is associated with this amendment until I take time to go and verify each individual thing. I suspect that maybe some things were true at one point years ago. Uh, Member Donley's been on the board for a number of years, um, and things obviously have changed within A A S B. I know since, um, I've been on the board, I certainly have made Anchorage's voice present and heard, um, even though I'm not a member of the board, because we do pay dues, and, um, we're the largest district, and so, um, if they're actively advocating against our interests, that's a, a big deal, but I haven't seen even one instance that I can speak to, to that end. Thank you.
Thank you. No other comments?
Rappa?
Sure.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. Specific example, the members requesting happened a few years ago when, uh, the Municipal Assembly, uh, funded, uh, a district cost differential study. And we went to the Association of School Boards because, um, the, uh, the organization that had done the past study was the Institute of Social and Economic Research at the university. And they said they didn't want to take our money to do a new study because they didn't want people to think it was biased because Anchorage, um, was the only sponsor of it. So we went to the Association of School Boards and asked, well, now you represent all school boards. This is in your, this is, uh, in the policy. Uh, would you take our money and go to and be, and utilize it to negotiation with I S R to do the study? And they said, oh, no, no, we don't, we don't want to do that, even though it was, even it was, it was a policy. They said, we don't want to take the heat for what might happen from the results. So I don't think they were really sticking up for us at all in that case. And as far as, um, the increase in the B S A, I, I do agree we have a joint interest in that, but the pecuniary interest of everybody at that, at that meeting was, was in increasing the B S A. And everybody else in that meeting had a ratio that was greater than Anchorage. The per student ratio that everybody else in that group, room was gonna get from a B S A increase is greater than what Anchorage would get. So they certainly had a pecuniary self-interest in supporting that at that time. So I think these are all rational reasons to continue to participate in the, uh, the Association of School Boards. But unless we take a stand at some point in time, I just don't think that some of our kid, our kids getting one seven hundred and fortieth of a vote compared to some of the other kids in this organization is anywhere close to being fair. And I'd just like to see some movement, and there hasn't been any for five years, towards closing that equity gap. Thank you.
Not seeing any more, um, uh, hands or wishes to comment, let's vote. We're voting on the, um, amendment to delete funding for membership in the Alaska Association of School Boards. Whenever you're ready. Let's just do a voice vote.
Member Higgins? Member Holloman?
No.
Member Jacobs?
No.
Member Lessons?
No.
Member Wilson?
No.
Member Donley? President Bellamy?
No.
And that amendment fails. Uh, six to one. That brings us back to the original, to approve the preliminary financial plan. Member, uh, Donley.
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, this budget includes about thirty-two thousand dollars for dues for the Coalition for Education Equity. That's a group of, um, quite a few small school districts around the state. But the Anchorage School District is the only, one of the largest five school districts as a member of this organization, and as such pays a very large share of the dues to this organization. Because they represent by far, um, mostly, well, we're the only urban area, really, that's represented by this group or members in it. They take positions that are clearly in conflict with the best interests of Anchorage taxpayers. Uh, once again, they oppose formation of local government. They oppose increasing the minimum number of students to have a state-funded school. And I, you know, none, Matsu, Fairbanks, Juno, Keen Eye, none of them have seemed appropriate for them to be members of this organization. So I really think that it would be, um, a wise choice of our funds to utilize the thirty-two thousand dollars someplace else. So I would move amendment number two to delete the dues for the Coalition from economic, uh, for education equity from the budget.
Is there a second? Hearing none? That amendment fails. Member Donley? Do you have another?
Thank you, Madam President. We also are members of a group called the Council for Great City Schools. This is an organization that represents pretty much focused on the largest, the very largest of school districts in the nation. Uh, one time Anchorage, uh, had membership over fifty thousand students and was kind of the general criteria for this organization. Uh, we've since fallen, uh, by about five thousand students from that time. Once again, I believe this organization, because of its nature, these major urban school districts have very different interests, many interests than, uh, school districts in Alaska. And I did participate in one of their meetings. They were very focused on matters of what I thought were extreme proposals on gun control, not gun control, but confiscation and registration, things that people in Alaska, absolute majority of Alaska, would not support. And I found it difficult because they all acted like they were all unanimous in it. And when I would raise an objection, they thought, well, they were, they were puzzled by it. They just couldn't comprehend how anybody would oppose confiscation of weapons and registration of weapons. So I do think that because of the nature of the organization, and I agree with Member Higgins's point about they do good auditing, uh, services, but I'm very concerned about us funding an organization that clearly and strongly and regularly advocates for extreme, um, uh, firearms, anti-firearms positions. So I would move amendment number three to delete the dues for the Council of Great City Schools from this budget.
Is there a second? Member Higgins seconds for discussion? Right, so the amendment before you is to delete funding for membership in the Council of Great City Schools. Yes.
I have to admit, they're a persuasive organization because I think you came back from that meeting and introduced it in the Governance Committee. So I don't know if they held unusual sway over you for a little bit, or, uh, but I'm, I'm not sure. I, once again, one of the things I learned in, in moving here over thirty years ago from the East Coast, we're a little isolated, and if we don't actually maintain connections where we can talk to people that have similar things going on, we don't have the range of ideas that we would normally be able to get. People don't travel up here much and sit down and talk about education issues. We, we have to go to them. All of these things have value to them. I, I think most board members have experienced some aspect of it, and all of them come with some, some things that don't matter to us very much at all. And I think that's kind of the nature of being an unusual state that doesn't quite match up the way any other state does. So once again, I would say that there's a benefit to us to be in it, and that we have to make sure and make good use of that information and, and the opportunities.
Thank you, Member Holloman. Uh, Member Higgins?
And this is one that I have really, uh, mixed feelings about because in part I recall the Council of Great City Schools coming in and calling the Anchorage School Board irresponsible because we changed something in the budget, that we should have not been involved with it. That came from the president, the Council of Great City Schools. It was insulting as hell, I'm sorry, but it was awful. And, and it's been the approach that the role of the board is, you know, very, very limited, and we shouldn't be involved in any other issues. I don't think that's what the public wants. There are twenty-two member districts that are eligible that are not participating, and I look at that. But then, on the other hand, I look at it and I realize that they have done some good things for us. We have used them for audits. We had an audit of purchasing once when I was an audit chair, and it cost us about forty thousand, another thirty thousand or something for complete new policies, and it saved the district an estimated half million dollars a year afterwards. So they, we, because of our connection with the Council of Great City Schools, we have access to people who are professional in other school districts that participate. We only pay for the cost of transportation and per diem, and we get some fantastic results out of that, some great, some great audits. We're looking at the potential, we do in the audit committee, it would cost hundreds of thousands of dollars to do some of the things that we get for almost nothing because we contribute our professional staff to their audits sometimes too. So it's quid pro quo, but it's just a tremendous financial savings. So while I appreciate the, the, um, uh, the motion because I have strong views on this position, uh, and it's not favorable to the treatment or the words, the way that we've been addressed at times, uh, within that. It's hard for me to turn around and say that we're gonna spend hundreds of thousands of dollars more of public funds to get audits done that saves the public money because I get upset with the way they make some statements. I don't think that's, from a business standpoint, if I was putting the cash in my pocket, why would I not do it? And in this case, it's the cash going back into the pockets of the citizens. And that's the reason why I'm, I'm not gonna support it. But I do appreciate bringing the motion forward because I think it's leads the school district in the wrong direction what the school board should be doing, um, by following that. But I think we're, we're more in line now with the N S B A, the National School Board Association. And because we save so much money with the Council of Great City School audits, I think we'd be giving up too much to, to simply walk away from it. But that's the only reason why I will not vote for it. Thank you.
Any other comments? Uh, Member Wilson?
Unlike Member Donley, I've, I've had amazing experience with, um, the Council of Great City Schools and their training and the conference that I, I attended. I've learned a great deal, was speaking with board members and community advocates from, um, larger school districts. And I, I really appreciate, um, the training and their advocacy and their continual encouragement to focus on student outcome-focused government, governance. And I'll repeat that, student outcome-focused governance. So that's, that's really, um, continues to help me stay focused on our kids.
Thank you. Any other comments? Let's vote. The motion before you is to delete funding for membership in the Council of Greater City Schools.
Member Jacobs?
No.
Member Donley?
Yes.
Member Higgins? Member Lessons?
No.
Member Wilson?
No.
Member Holloman?
No.
President Bellamy? Member Holloman?
No.
President Bellamy?
No.
And that, that motion, that, that amendment, uh, fails six to one. That brings us back to the initial motion, uh, to approve the preliminary financial plan. Any comments? Member Donley?
Thank you, Madam President. One of the cost savings this board examined and was costed out by the administration was to discontinue something called the middle school model. That's confusing because we have middle schools. But within those middle schools, about three or four years ago, the board adopted something called the middle school model, which added an extra planning period within those, those, those periods of, uh, the middle school period of the day, the various periods of the day. And that resulted in a requirement that there be an additional twenty-four middle school teachers at a cost of about two point nine three million dollars. I really think that's, that, considering the options we're faced with, I really think that that is something that we ought to continue to legitimately consider as a cost reduction, is elimination of that extra planning period. It doesn't appear in senior high, it doesn't appear in elementary, really wouldn't fit so much because I, I acknowledge that middle schools are a different format. But it wasn't done before, three or four years ago, and it is clearly an additional cost. So I would move amendment number four, which is to discontinue the middle school model for reduction of twenty-four middle school teachers, saving about two point nine three million dollars.
Can I have a point of clarification, please, uh, President?
To the maker of the motion.
I have no idea what they added two or three years ago, and that's what we're going through because, uh, we've always had the extra planning period. That's, that's kind of the model of the middle school, that they, that, that teachers who engage with a group of students that are going from class to class, they get a chance to get focused on the kids, they do the interventions. That's one of the things that has, uh, reduced the dropout rates and the, and the, you know, graduates, there's a lot of positive impacts, reason why the, the school district adopted this.
So if we don't, if we don't get a second, though, we can't discuss it, so. Uh, but I, did you have a clarification for the maker of the motion, amendment?
I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna pass right now because I know what, well, I just don't, uh, uh, we can always revisit it at some point, but right now I'm gonna pass on, on second.
So again, the motion is to delete, discontinue the middle school model. Is there a second? I mean, we, I'm sorry. So, uh, moved in second? So moved in second? So we are now open for a discussion. Now, Member Higgins?
Maybe the administration can answer. Was additional time allocated in the last few years? Because I know that we've always had the model, provided extra time for them to be able to meet, and that was an extra schedule, and that's part of the cost issue, but was there a change here two or three years ago?
Through the President, Member Higgins, I wasn't here two to three years ago, so I can't speak to what happened, but I'll give Andy Ratliff an opportunity to perhaps share.
Thank you. Yes, several years ago, or probably maybe four years ago, we had, we did change it, and the board did kind of codify that middle school model, but what ended up happening is, was we increased the PTR at those middle school grade levels to pay for it. So it went from the same PTR of like sixth grade in elementary schools, I think it was around twenty-six or twenty-seven, went up to the secondary PTR of thirty point two five. And at the same time, we actually tweaked that metric for the planning time, where instead of one-sixth planning time, we have two-sevenths as the budget. So it really didn't affect the budget overall or add many teachers to it, but my understanding is they were always doing that middle school model anywhere in that teaming time where they have the two prep times, no matter how we budgeted, they just got this group of FTE and the middle schools planned out their day as they normally would. So when they did that, it really didn't add any teachers or any cost, it just kind of switched those metrics around with a higher PTR and then more prep time on top of it, so about the same amount of teachers overall to serve the middle school students.
Member Holloman?
This is a point of clarification and personal conflict, but I used to work in a middle school, and so I objected to the term extra planning time, sort of like extra sleep or, you know, something along those lines. But the second planning time had specific duties attached to it, and in a very uncharacteristic move, Anchorage School District actually allocated paid time to people to do the work they were asking them to do. It's really like just a novel grasp at trying to be like the private sector, if you will, almost, that people should be paid to do the work they're asked to do on the clock. When it was implemented, there was a significant cost, where basically they followed the spreadsheet calculation of we're going to have the second planning time for these specific duties, and so additional staff were added. And then also characteristic of the Anchorage School District, they began to whittle that down, starting in the early two thousands. When middle school was first rolled out, there was really kind of a wealth of electives and optional activities for kids, as well as the opportunity for staff to do cooperative projects across different disciplines and just any number of creative things that happen at different schools. But slowly, the PTR would get whittled a little bit, get whittled a little bit more. There's sort of the ideal of what a middle school model is, and today there's what's actually practiced in Anchorage, which has some resemblance to it. All the signs say middle school, we've never considered changing those. But for example, a lot of the teams no longer have their own kids on team for math classes. Instead, they transfer across for different reasons, and that's sort of the first disassembly of kids into the larger school. One of the key points is that kids have a smaller community they feel very attached to, as opposed to being in a school of eight hundred or nine hundred kids. They're on a team of about a hundred and twenty or a hundred and thirty kids, depending on the PTR. So eliminating that would be a major shift, schedules would have to be redone, classes would have to disappear. It's really something that if we were going to do it, it would have to be planned out with more lead time than what we would be allocating right now if we did it. But I also think it would be remiss to do it without giving the public a real opportunity to weigh in on it, and I think you would find a lot of people care about it very deeply. A lot of the middle school parents really supported it and realized the value of it. At one time, there was actually a push for it to sort of level up to the high school area. It wouldn't have looked exactly like middle school, but there would have been houses that kind of put kids together in a, for part of their day. Both Service and Diamond looked into that. It's been over ten or twelve years ago, but when they were contemplating it, it created a lot of excitement, but then funding kind of went the other way. A decade or so ago, when we contemplated doing away with it, the reporter for Channel Two was asking me, if you do away with middle school, what does that mean? I mean, kids are still going to go to school, right? And I said, well, yeah, but they would have like five or six or seven individual classes that wouldn't be on teams and whatnot. And she was a fairly recent graduate, and she goes, well, you mean, it would be like high school? And I go, yeah, basically, it would be high school at seventh and eighth grade. She goes, that would be awful. I can't imagine it being that way. So there's tremendous value to it, it matters a lot to members of the community. If we were going to eliminate it, I think we would need to charge the administration with coming up with a plan, and part of that plan would be giving the public the opportunity to come speak to us about it. I think you'd find that a lot of people value it.
Thank you, Member Holloman. Any other comments? I just like, you know, we have a balanced budget before us. We have had these conversations in December, I don't know about the middle school one, but I think trying to find, we were looking everywhere to try to find savings, and somehow we found enough, as Member Lessons mentioned earlier, to get us to the point where we have a balanced budget. So I just, I just want to caution the, you know, we're going over stuff we've already gone over, we're considering cuts that we've already considered, and we've also given our, it's my comment, my comments, this is, Member Donley, this is my, these are my comments, I'm not, I can't comment?
You can comment.
Thank you. And so in my opinion, we have, we have a balanced budget before us, and again, this is, the budget is organic, we are not stuck in it. So if we decide earlier or down, on, down the road, that something needs to change, I think we can revisit things, but right now, so my vote on the motion on this, on the amendment would be no, because I think, I don't, because I think we can get a balanced budget without it, we have a balanced budget. If that is something we want to revisit in the future, I'm happy to do that, but I will, my vote will be no.
Point of order, Madam President?
Point of order? What's your point of order?
You just implied that the thumbs up or thumbs down, that was like an informal poll at a work session, was controlling over our vote tonight, and that's a breach of--
No, that is not what I implied, that's what you, that's what you applied to my comments.
You just said that we already have a deal here, and so we shouldn't change this.
No, I did not.
This was brought up--
Member Donley, what is your point of order?
My point of order is, that's completely wrong. You cannot bind this organization based on work sessions.
I can state my opinion, I can state my opinion.
This is the point of time where we need to vote yes or no on this budget and propose changes to this budget in a formal manner. All those other things--
And that is exactly what you've done, Member Donley, nobody has stopped you from making any amendment that you want. I am entitled to my opinion regarding where we are, and you may not like it.
Yeah, it's not your opinion that I'm concerned about, it's the implication that because a majority in a work session made a decision, that it's inappropriate to discuss, another proposal was brought up during the work session at this time.
Is there a, any other comments on the motion to discontinue the middle school model? Yes, you may wrap up.
Thank you, Madam President. We're faced with really tough choices. As Member Lessons pointed out, we're using sixty-five million dollars in one-time funds to balance this nine hundred million dollar budget tonight, and anything that may not be the ideal choice of any of us for a lot of the budget reductions that we made, but we need to chip away more, as much as possible, and one of the things that we've done in this that I disagree with is the increase in the PTR across the board, and I'll have a chance to address that later. But this is one point, one place where we could save some money, and so that's why I think it's appropriate, and I thank the board for allowing it to be second and be discussed tonight. Thank you.
Any other comments on the amendment? So let's vote. The amendment is to discontinue the middle school model. Voice vote, please.
Member Donley?
Yes.
Member Higgins?
No.
Member Jacobs?
No.
Member Holloman?
No.
Member Wilson?
No.
Member Lessons?
No.
President Bellamy?
No.
That brings us back to the original motion. I do think we need to take, members need a break, so we'll take a five-minute recess. Five minutes. There they come. Okay, I'd like to welcome everybody back. We are now back to the main motion to approve the preliminary financial plan. Are there any other conversations, amendments, I'm sorry? Member Donley?
Thank you, Madam President. The Department of Education, the State Department of Education identifies school district funding by categories, they have a code, the state function code, and function codes five-ten and five-fifty are those administrative costs that are not related directly to classrooms. I'm trying to find places to reduce our spending so we're not having to use sixty-five million dollars in one-time funds, because we know we won't have that much next year, because we're using so much this year to help close the fiscal gap. So one of the places that, according to the Department of Education coding, to possibly consider are these types of administrative, non-classroom-related. I'm not saying or not implying at all these aren't important functions, we obviously need to have basic functions in payroll and finance and human resources, but at the same time, we've got to find some additional reductions somewhere in this budget to balance it going forward into next year. So this, I would propose that we reduce these two fund categories by five percent, which would equal a total reduction of about two million forty thousand dollars, and that's what Amendment Number Five does, and I would move Amendment Number Five.
And which were the, could you repeat the categories, please?
Yeah, it's coded, state function codes five-ten and five-fifty.
Five-ten, five-fifty.
And, and, I, this one was submitted to--
So the motion before you is to reduce codes five-ten and five-fifty by five percent. Is there a second? Not hearing a second, that motion fails. Do you have another, Member Donley?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. One thing that's in the budget before us to hope to save money is an increase in the PTR-- PTR by one across the board. That's the pupil teacher ratio in all our classrooms, K through 12, by one student. The administration has explained where it might not have the impact that it says it would have, but it is, appears it is part of the cost savings in the budget. And I'm very concerned in virtually every campaign I've ever run, I've said that my priority was the pupil teacher ratio, trying to hold it down as much as possible. So I'm very concerned about what might happen, uh, with this one across the board cut. And I'm particularly concerned about grades K through three because it's been a policy of this board, well, the boards that have existed before this board, let me put it that way, to, to try as much as possible to minimize the impacts on lower grades, uh, for the pupil teacher ratio, any increases there. So increases we've been forced to do over the past six years have basically occurred in the higher grades. And we tried to hold the kindergarten, uh, through three harmless in that period of time. Um, so my personal preference would be instead of cutting one across the board or adding one student from K through 12, to, um, try to not do that in the grades K through two and use the, uh, middle school model, discontinue that to pay for it. So, um, if you added up the dues that we pay for the Coalition for Equity, Education Equity, the Council of Greater City Schools, the Alaska Association School Boards, the National School Board Association, and, and put in a 1% reduction in administrative services function codes five, 10, and five, 50, and combine that with, um, doing away with the middle school model, you more than pay for the, uh, you can, you not have to cut our, uh, our, our, you not have to increase our pupil teacher ratio in grades K through two. And you would actually end up with a net savings of about $400,000. And that's what amendment number six proposes to do, and I would move amendment number six.
Okay, amendment, uh, number six is to hold harmless, uh, the PTR in grades K three.
K three two.
Second. It's moved in second? To hold harmless, or what did it?
Yeah, but it's different. It's an amendment that dedicates the money to something else, and it's also a 1% reduction rather than a 5% reduction in the registration.
So, point of clarification. Uh, and I think you probably gonna, you have a second, so you can speak to it. Uh, but the question, um, has to do with the savings that you want, you might have realized those, those were all voted down earlier. So then, how would, how would you fund this, I guess?
Thank you, Madam President. Um, this is a different motion, uh, for several reasons. Uh, number one, it allows members to take money from this pot of money and move it to another pot of money. And that pot of money is to hold down class sizes in K through two. Second, and that wasn't ever presented before. Second, it only includes a 1% reduction in administrative services function where the prior motion that was voted on separately was a 5% reduction, which is quite significant in dollar amounts.
Any questions? Uh, Member Higgins?
Now, this may be an academic discussion because this is really going to be impacted by how much money we get from the state, and we've got vacancies already, we've got other issues. But I do think it's an important subject because, uh, I've been through NSBA conferences and presentations, one from Philadelphia, where 90% of the effectiveness of a lower classroom size is achieved by having lower classroom sizes in K one, two. And, and so in that regards, I think this is a very important issue. We're looking at the academics, putting the emphasis on reading early. Uh, any increase in PTR at those grades is kind of productive to what we're trying to achieve academically. Uh, while putting it at a higher level has less of an impact, uh, on academic outcomes. And that's the reason why, uh, was it 36 states, I believe, that act, have a maximum effective classroom sizes? And for K through three is one to 15, beyond that is 25. So the, the real emphasis of a low classroom size is at, at the early grades. It's a big impact on academics and it's such a question of what's best for kids, in my opinion. And just based on the information that I've seen and the reports and the presentations, um, I would support the idea of saying the same dollars, but to simply, uh, say it's for, uh, three through 12, or four through, three through 12, and we do the PTR that way, and we still, we can maintain the same dollars. This is, like I said, I think this is academic. I think we're going to get some more money from the state. We're going to be looking and saying, do we want to do this or not? What are the other options? But, um, um, I do think it sends a statement that we don't want the K one, two to increase in size because we're so focused on trying to get these kids to academically getting them approved.
Thank you. Other comments? Member Jacobs?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. Maybe a question for the maker. Um, the cut to administration and, um, hoping we can get clarity on which positions, um, we're proposing to cut, um, if they're vacant or not, and how their, uh, specific jobs impact students. Thank you.
Yes.
That I would leave to the discretion of the administration. And so 1% reduction, um, there's millions of dollars in these codes. Um, and I know that they, during our work sessions, they had come forward with several proposals that would equal about another million dollars and, well, and I'm, I'm just taking this off the top of my head, and I'm sorry if I'm, I'm off by dollars, maybe it's about half a million dollars, that we left on the table during those working sessions. So I would imagine they would go to those proposals, um, just to try to find this $400,000 reduction.
Madam President, could I follow up?
Sure.
It sounds like, um, the member prefers I address the question to Dr. Bryant. So, Dr. Bryant, I know you've spoken to the fact that, um, the Anchorage School District spends roughly 2% of its general fund budget on administration, um, or at least previously has. Um, if we were to reduce, um, and pass this motion tonight, do you have an idea as to which positions you would be cut? Um, if those positions are funded or not, and how those positions impact students?
I, I do not because we need to take that process very seriously. So what I would need to do is consult with the content experts and go through all of the pros and cons and trade offs, uh, doing any sort of reduction to any position. So for example, we may be weighing, uh, cybersecurity insurance, we may be weighing changes to HR or budget analyst positions or what have you. But those conversations require, um, in-depth conversation, which is why, um, we were attempting to be proactive by having a work session on administration early on, as well as our December work session, where administration was something that was discussed, um, by the full board. So to, um, deliberate, uh, on the spot, how we would reduce $400,000 or any amount at this point, um, may be a little premature, um, and could pose risk.
Uh, did you have a follow-up, Member Jacobs?
Um, I'm trying to find the memo, Madam President, perhaps, uh, a board member or Dr. Bryant can remind me. Um, this budget does reduce administrative costs for the district, and I get that dollar figure again.
Uh, two million? Uh, what was the figure? Do you know Jim?
I can perhaps, in your gym, it was combined between support services and admin, uh, uh, district admin.
Right, we didn't break it down in the same categories. You know, we went through that exercise trying to define what exactly administration is, what it means. Um, I can't tell you, like, the way that we've looked at it is in terms of how this budget is presented. You see administrative reductions of about, you know, $6.2 million or so, albeit, you know, about 5.2 million of that is increased attrition, uh, rates with, uh, increased vacancies, school resource officers, and then an increase in district-wide insurance. But on top of that, we made about $2.4 million in other cuts through administration operations. Um, but then we did add back another million and a half in, uh, like, mental health and some of our priorities within secondary education with respect to professional learning communities and, um, collaboration time. Thank you. So, yeah, so, so we did make some cuts across our administration, but we didn't really line it out, uh, by terms of state function like we have it. Um, the state, as the state departments are in the book anyway, for the presentation.
No other questions, thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Yes.
I'll just share because this is my night for sharing how my feelings. You know, one of the things that I find, um, I'm conflicted about with the current cuts that we're doing in the administrat- first of all, I would love to have a lower PTR, so I appreciate the intent of that. Um, but when we, you know, the, the cuts that have been proposed next year, those are real positions that are not going to be filled. When we eliminate the gifted supervisor, that's somebody responsible for gifted education for over 3,000 students. Those students' academic outcomes are going to have some kind of an impact. There are other people still within the gifted department, and certainly there are teachers, but, um, you know, we're going to be asking another staff member to pick up those responsibilities. Um, so, yeah, so the 400 or 500,000 dollars in the cuts you propose, um, you know, could be found, but I think also at what cost? I mean, what are the positions that we're talking about? And that's, that is really chick tricky and challenging. But, but I appreciate the focus on our youngest and most vulnerable learners. Very sincerely.
Hold on, Member Higgins, let's see if anybody else. Member Wilson?
I also appreciate, um, trying to focus on our youngest learners. I can't do it at the, the expense of our middle schoolers. First sentence is to, is a reduction of 18 middle school teachers. 18 middles-, how many middle schools do we have in the district?
Nine. Nine. And I'll take account the.
I mean, it, it, it's a give and take. This, this whole budget season has been give and take, and all of it's been pretty torturous. Because we take, i- if we give something, we take something else and some. So I, I cannot support this, even though I, I absolutely support providing more PTR for our younger students, but I can't do it at the expense of, of our older students right now.
Member Higgins, will come back around to you?
Yeah, I, um, I, the, the, the administration cost gives all kind of ways, and we, the, the joke with the federal government is if you want to cut $1, we have to sell the Washington Monument. Um, and that's a, that's an old approach. This doesn't necessarily involve cutting positions. It involves administrative issues. Uh, we've discussed that somewhat, and I'll bring up the issue of group health insurance. It hasn't been on bid 20 years, and we're paying 35 million, and that's something you can save a lot of money in. So I don't think we're asking, there's all kinds of options there that are there that will save a lot more than what we're proposing. Uh, so I don't want to make it sound like if we cut a dollar, you cut a person. That's not true, okay? There are administrative changes and improvements in, in the, in the procurement process and the issues associated. If the administration accepts that insurance is a product and not a service, and they're going to do it based on best value, then we're going to save much more than that, okay? There is no question in my mind, and I, so feel what I'm very familiar with. And so I'm, I'm looking and saying, this is, this is more of an academic issue because this, anything from the state, we're going to be looking at these particular issues again. But I just, I think it's a strong statement that we've got to do something academically, and I like these. And, and the money is not a big issue from the administration. It's not about people. It's about efficiencies, and it's not an unreasonable request.
Member? Member Lessons?
Sorry, I had a couple of, maybe a, a point of clarification. Member Jacobs earlier said, I think that we send, have spent about 2% of our budget on district administration. It's really 1% statewide, it's 2%, but ASD is half that. So we're 1% of the general fund on our administration. We're a leaner operation and more efficient than some of our counterparts statewide. And, um, I'll leave it there.
Follow-up?
Yeah, a follow-up. I am not saying that the administration is overfunded. There were issues there for, for training and supportive staff and lots of areas there that really impacts outcomes too. I'm saying from the existing area, there were opportunities, is all I'm saying. But I want to be clear about this, there've always been some areas in funding in administration when it comes to staff training and things like that, that's always been a concern too. So I don't want to cluster everything together and saying that, anything about the existing staff at all, because that's not what I'm trying to argue for at all. There, there's a, there's a issue about adequate staffing and what they need to do. We've got very few people in human resources that can assist principals with issues involving staff and what they need to do. There, very few that can do, uh, some of the stuff that needs to be done, but this size organization is frighteningly small. So I'm not, the fact that we can save money doesn't mean it couldn't be redirected in administration. I want to be fair about that. But I'm just, I, I'm putting kids first, and that's what, that's all I'm trying to argue for.
So I'd like to make a comment. So when I paraphrase, uh, amendment, amendment number six, I said, it, I've said, in my own words, hold harmless K through two in terms of PTR increase. When I look at the motion, uh, amendment six, it, it reads, discontinue the middle school model for at, for a reduction of 18 middle school teachers. Savings would be about 2.93 million. We just voted against that. Uh, the next is delete funding for membership in the Coalition of Education Equity for a reduction of 32,000. We just voted on that. Delete funding for membership in the Council of Greater City Schools for a reduction of 44,000. We voted on that. Delete funding for membership in the Alaska Association of School Boards. We voted on that. Uh, delete funding for membership in the National School Board Association. Uh, we, for a, a reduction of 8.6, uh, uh, what is that, 8.6 thousand, 8,600? Reduction in it, uh, uh, so we voted on this, it, the NSBA. Uh, reduce, reduction in administrative service functions, state functions, code five, 10, five, 50. That's, that's new, this, that would be a new thing for us tonight to consider. Uh, restore current pupil teacher ratio for students in grade K through two, grade levels K through two. Um, I agree with the, the, the intent to, uh, um, hold harmless K two, but the rest of it, uh, I do not, I, I mean, I will, I can't vote for, so I can't vote for the motion as it is. Member Lessons?
Going back to a few numbers. So, um, earlier in January, uh, there was a presentation before the Senate Education Committee, um, by folks over at ICER, and they, uh, shared that, um, when we look at education spending in Alaska, when you adjust it for the cost of ank, living in Anchorage, and then you adjust it for the national average, um, we are 7% under what nationwide funding would provide for education. And the cost drivers for education in Alaska are small schools, which is really not ASD, um, healthcare, um, energy, and then housing costs. So statewide, uh, we're not getting enough funding. I think that the BSA, the $30 per student and increase to the BSA, which will take place in FY '24, will give ASD like a $2.6 million bump, which is not, not even going to make a difference in, in the PTR. It will not make an evidence-based difference in our PTR ratios. Um, when I look back to, um, a slide that was shared with the Anchorage School Board in February 2017, um, there was a comparison between what was the evidence-based model and what was then current ASD practice for staffing in elementary school. And we were, you know, nine and a half elementary teachers short at an average school. I mean, the, the difference between where we, we are and what we're able to do by treading water and applying tens of millions of dollars of one-time funding, um, and where we need to be is, is massive. And hopefully people listening to this board meeting tonight will take some of this information and share that maybe they'd like their classrooms to be staffed adequately. Um, I guess that's my hope.
Thank you very much. Other comments? Seeing and hearing none? Um, you can read them, I just read the amendment number six. Uh, we will vote on amendment number six, and it's, uh, on your screen if you need to read it again. Uh, we will vote on amendment number six, and it's on your screen if you need to read it again.
Member Wilson? No. Member Jacobs?
No.
Member Donley?
Yes.
Member Higgins? Member Holloman?
No.
Member Lessons?
No.
President Bellamy?
No.
That amendment fails six to one. We are now back at the original motion to approve the preliminary financial plan. Member Donley?
Thank you, Madam President. And this will be my last amendment, by the way. So the National Association of School Boards, and it's a de minimis amount of money for a $900 million budget. It's, uh, the dues there are $8,600 a year, which is actually not a lot of money, but it's very symbolic, I believe. The, I'm hoping at some point we'll be able to talk about the substance of the concerns that's led 26 state school board systems, and that's associations of state school boards across the nation to withdraw or distance themselves from the National Association of, uh, School Boards. But not the Alaska School Board Association. So the majority of states, their, their school board associations that oversee those states have taken some formal action against the National Association of School Boards because of the letter that was written by this organization to the Department of Justice that very improperly characterized, and I've read it and researched it carefully, uh, many instances where parents were simply talking or disagreeing, uh, came and testified at their school boards and wanted them to be classified as domestic terrorists. The actual, actual drilling down into some 26 examples that were cited in the footnotes revealed that the majority of them weren't what they said they were. This whole event was super concerning. And of course, we do have a resolution that's currently in the Governance Committee regarding this issue. But since we are one of a minority of states that hasn't taken a statewide position on this, I really think that this would be a strong statement that this board could make, that it just wasn't right to call legitimate parent testimony terrorism, domestic terrorism in this nation. Uh, it was, it was one of the most concerning events of the last three years. And there's been a lot of concerning events in the last three years. But that attack on parents' rights that was orchestrated and planned and, and inaccurate and improper and has since been, uh, admitted that it was such by the National School Boards Association, but unfortunately not by the current executive branch of government, really needs a response, I believe. And so this amendment, I would propose to delete the funding for the National School Board Association membership of $8,600 from this budget. And that's amendment number one, and I'd move amendment number one. It's amendment number eight, I'm sorry.
So.
I skipped amendment number seven. I'm not moving amendment number seven. This is my last amendment. Okay, yeah, thank you.
So can you put it out? I mean, as soon as we get a second. I mean, I'm trying, I just need a point of clarification to the maker. So we just voted, you just made a motion or amendment to delete our membership, get, uh, or, um, not fund our membership with uh, the National School Board Association. Is this the same motion?
No, Madam President, they're different motions because the other motion included many other items in it as, as an alternative to the increase in class sizes of K through two in our district. This is a standalone reduction to the dues that we would pay to the National School Boards Association.
Okay, and so could, do you, do you mind telling me what your amendment number one and two were? When you start, when we started the discussion? Number, amendment number one?
This is, uh, I, I understand, we went through, this is the fourth of four dues associations we pay dues to.
Right.
The first was the, I believe, the Alaska Association of School Boards. Then we had the Council of Great City Schools. Then we had the Education Equity Coalition. So we have not previously voted as a standalone.
For the NSBA.
National Association of School Boards.
Okay, thanks for the clarification. Is there a second?
Second for discussion.
Uh, Member Higgins?
Thank you. I, um, I want to respond to a lot of that questions in there. Um, because, um, at the time that the letter came out, it was, and, and the NSBA has apologized for it. The current president, CEO, said it was his own thing to do, we shouldn't have been involved. We were being threatened, of course, that we were committing war crimes and we were doing a lot. It wasn't a civil discussion in many regards, and we had some pretty, um, confrontive type situations in here coming into the building or leaving. And ours was calm compared to other places in the country. It was pretty nasty there, uh, in regards to different issues, and it, it was very aggressive. And the NSBA responded in a way that I don't, that they shouldn't have done. They shouldn't have come out with that letter. But at the NSBA, uh, and in a public setting with what, uh, you know, a lot of people, there was an apology there issued in regards to it. There was a statements about it, that it was a mistake, and they've expressed that repeatedly in regards to it. But to define that there was calm conversation, that was in response to very aggressive and confrontive situation coming into some school boards in this country. It was very, um, uh, for some felt very threatened, uh, in regards to it. And they had actual law enforcement, they had to break up meetings. It was, it was pretty, um, it was pretty hostile, okay? I think that's a very safe statement to make. So in regards to it, uh, they overreacted, I think, because they should have let the individual schools, and they should have done that, they didn't. And so those who felt, uh, supportive of those confronting the school, uh, that became a big political issue. NSBA should have been focused strictly on students, on schools, and leave that issue aside, and they didn't do it. But there was an apology. They came forward with it, they came out public with it. Uh, I was there when the president made his speech in regards to it, and it was, it was heartfelt. I believe him. And, um, so we're evaluating the mistake, or we're looking at the benefits of the NSBA. And I think the NSBA does a good job of focusing on student outcomes, on focuses on, on the power of the board to do things. And so I won't be supporting this, but I want to be fair in regards to the fact that the NSBA did respond and that what the characterization of what was going on at that time was pretty hostile and in many school districts. And it was front page newspaper, it was out there on everything you can think of. Um, and it was unfortunate, it was emotional, and they responded emotionally. They shouldn't have because main focus on kids. But I'm not, um, I, I, I don't want to characterize it that they haven't apologized because I was there when they actually did it.
Thank you, Member Higgins. Any other comments? Yes, Member Holloman?
Um, part of the reason, I, I read the letter the NSBA created. I don't recall that they called parents and testified domestic terrorists. They've seemed to make a clear distinction to me that there were people that were trying to incite fear. There were people trying to disrupt the, the board meetings. And it seemed very clear to me they were referring to those people specifically. But the, for people coming and, and offering testimony, that, I didn't get that. And, uh, I think it's become a political thing. I, I think the states that, uh, pulled out like that wanted to find something to be heard about, and they did. Uh, again, we get benefits from our membership that are tangible, that help our district. Uh, otherwise, we shouldn't spend the money on it. But I, I think this is simply a red herring that people thrown up. And, and it's not really true if you go read the letter carefully. They're making a distinction. And as Member Higgins pointed out, it was a time where meetings were purposely being disrupted in ways that were frightening, um, in other parts of the country. We didn't experience it here. Although we have leveled up our level of security and caution about things compared to several years ago. I mean, we, we experienced a little bit of it, but not anything real bad. So once again, I will vote no on this. Um, we're in it because we think there's value there. That value is still there. I, I don't think the characterization of their letter is accurate.
Thank you. Any other comments? Uh, Member Jacobs?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. Can I get the, um, page and line item for where this is in our budget book? I think.
The request is for the page and line items.
Um, you'll be able to find that on page 66 of the budget book under, uh, I believe it's under, uh, line 490, other, uh, non-personnel expenditures. That's other called other expenditures. That's where our registrations and memberships for dues are. And the total is 75,750. Can I?
Member Jacobs?
Yeah, so, um, and do we, um, are we actually cutting a check to the NSBA? Or is this part of our membership with the AASB? I believe we run a separate check to the, to that association. Thank you.
Any other questions before we vote? Member Donley? Mm-hmm.
Thank you, Madam President. It'd be nice if the apology solved the problem, but it didn't. Because the Department of Justice formed a special task force based on that letter, and they've never dissolved it. And to think that the United States Department of Justice is imposing that chilling effect on parents testifying at school board meetings because they would very reasonably believe that their government now is investigating them improperly, is really significant. So while the letter was apologized for, the ultimate goal was achieved by the people who wrote it and coordinated it with the Department of Justice by, because subsequent public records disclosures have seen and proved that it was coordinated between the people who sent the letter and the Department of Justice to give them an excuse to create this special task force to investigate parents. So I find that incredibly concerning and disappointing in our federal government. And that's why I still believe that it's appropriate to make some sort of statement. And I wish we had the resolution before us to be able to debate it and argue those points. But the board has chosen not to bring that resolution forward to the full board for that discussion. Thank you.
Okay. I, I see your mic's on down there. Did you want to talk or? Okay. Member Jacobs, are you good? Okay. All right, let's call for the vote. The vote is amendment seven, delete funding for membership in the National School Board Association. Voice vote.
Member Holloman?
No.
Member Higgins? Member Donley?
Yes.
Member Jacobs?
No.
Member Lessons?
No.
Member Wilson?
No.
President Bellamy?
No.
So that amendment, uh, fails six to one. That brings us back to the main motion to approve the preliminary financial plan. Any discussion? Not seeing any? Member Donley?
Thank you, Madam Chair, on the main motion. This is my sixth budget I've had the opportunity to work on. This will be the very first time, I believe. If anybody over there thinks it's different, please tell me. But I can't remember the board ever increasing the PTR, the pupil teacher ratio for kindergarten through two before. We've always focused on the upper classes, and I think, I just, I understand we're scrambling, trying to find cuts. I've offered some additional cuts here. I just don't think that's the right thing to do. I think we should hold true to the policy this board is, has, has prior boards. Let me be clear, it's not this membership, but prior boards adopted. And that's not to increase the PTR in our, our lowest, most, our youngest learners.
Yeah, and I, I think you're probably right, Member Donley, except I do recall last year, we, we also used one-time funding to, to not have to increase class sizes. So we're running out of those funds right now. Yes, Member Higgins?
Well, I will say this is my 11th budget, so you're a newcomer. And, uh, I can say that in the past, the administration, some prior administrations viewed just changing PTR the easy thing to do to balance the budget. I can always just add one, and I don't have to worry about the funding and don't look at the impact of it. So always a concern to me. And I did see this as a last option kind of approach, as opposed to the first one, uh, that was done in the past. So I, I don't like the idea of increasing PTR. I agree with that. But I don't think this administration has turned to that as the easy option. They put a lot of other things in there instead before they got to PTR. And I feel confident we're going to get some money from the state. Uh, how much, I don't know. And that, at that time, the big issue is going to be the board, it comes back to the board for budget revisions, and we will have the opportunity to approve, uh, reverse some of the decisions that are made tonight as what decisions are there. And I'm sure PTR will be one of the discussions that we'll have. So, um, uh, from a practical standpoint, the past has been with some prior superintendents. This was the easy way to cut, and this administration is not opposing that during this period. And I appreciate the fact with that, and I'm hoping that we can avoid it even now. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Higgins. Uh, Member Holloman?
And of course, the thing we don't talk about too much is the PTR cut basically balances us on the backs of the people in the classroom. It just, it adds to their workload, doesn't give them more time to do their job. It doesn't give them any more resources to do their job. It simply gives them more job to do. So in, in some ways, is a last resort. But also, once we skew it a little bit, which we've done in the past to try to protect the lower grades for all the right reasons, I, I made that vote too. But if we continue to do that, then we continue to disproportionately load the upper grades. And we have a moral responsibility to those kids too. None of us are doing this because we think it's a good idea. We're doing it because we think this is what we have to. And trying to spare lower grades is good, but at some point, it just becomes inequitable. This is, I hope, the easiest thing for the administration to walk back if we do get additional funds. That's based on the notion that there are teachers out there to hire, which may be a little bit of a fiction at this point. But that's, that's the hope and goal. And, and it certainly looks more optimistic this year in the legislature than any other time. But at some point, I think we do have to be fair to kids in every grade level. We do front load a little bit in the lower grades for the right reasons. But we, we can't just keep pivoting to that and hold them harmless while things get worse and worse for our upper grades. So I, I do reluctantly support the budget. Um, and I hope we get to make some very worthwhile revisions.
Thank you. Member Lessons?
Yeah, I just wanted to underscore that we've been backfilling our budget with federal funds for a number of years. We spent $864,365 in FY22 on classroom teachers. We spent $24,387,417, um, dollars, um, oops, sorry, an additional 24 million and change in FY22 on classroom teachers from S R two. And then we allocated again $56.2 million for classroom teachers from S R three. And the only reason, as far as I understand, that we can roll over about $20 million of federal relief funds to FY24, and that we have such a substantial fund balance to put towards next year's budget, is because we're already balancing the budget on the backs of our teachers and students this year. We have hundreds of vacancies. They are already experiencing understaffing. They're experiencing reliance on long-term substitutes, on J1 visa holders, and teachers. They're experiencing reliance on long-term substitutes, on J-one visa holders, and teachers who are stretched like Gumby to, to make it all happen. So, um. I thought I would read from my, if I can have a favorite page in the budget book, uh, I do, and, um, it's just gonna, I'm gonna give us the forecast. For fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty-five, the district will have exhausted remaining stimulus funds and spend its savings down to the board minimum, and will be faced with difficult choices on how to provide an adequate education to all students. The budget shortfall for FY-25 can roughly be calculated as the usage of one-time federal grants, twenty million and fund balance, that's an error, um, forty-five billion plus two to three percent normal inflation on existing costs, um, for an estimated shortfall of seventy-eight to eighty-five million. So that's FY-25, a seventy-eight to eighty-five million dollar shortfall. For FY-26, twenty-five, twenty-six, um, and FY-26, twenty-seven, the district expects to contend with medical and liability insurance cost increases above the rate of inflation and normal inflation on salaries, benefits, services, and supplies, which will generate additional shortfalls of approximately thirteen to twenty million each year. These shortfalls could be exacerbated by prolonged periods of higher-than-average inflation as seen in twenty-twenty-one and twenty-twenty-two. And then here's the kicker. These budget shortfalls over the next three years could result in the elimination of over twelve hundred positions in order to close the fiscal gap and balance the budget if additional revenue sources are not provided. We desperately need additional revenue sources to adequately fund education.
Thank you very much. Not seeing any more hands? Yes.
I just want to thank Member Holloman for sticking up for my twins in ninth grade. You know, the way I see it, they had the advantage of having a low PTR when they were in kindergarten, first to second grade, and it paid off, paid off the rest of their academic careers, and that's why I think it's such a focus. I want other kids, you know, to like mine, have that advantage. And I just wanted to read from the budget document, and that's, including the state of Alaska on be, on behalf payments, the total for all funds for this budget is nine hundred and sixty million dollars, up about six percent increase from FY-22, twenty-three. Uh, that's just, we're just under a billion dollars now for our school district budget. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, so the motion before you is to approve the preliminary financial plan. We'll do a voice vote.
Member Donley?
No.
Member Higgins? Member Holloman?
Yes.
Member Jacobs?
Yes.
Member Lessons?
Yes.
Member Wilson?
Yes.
President Bellamy?
Yes.
And that. The, that, that motion passes six to one. All right, thank you. We going on now to memorandum number one oh seven. I think, Member Donley, you pulled it.
Madam President, I'm gonna move to approve ASD memorandum number one zero seven, uh, the approval of the sixth grade to middle school transition plan. Recommendation from the administration is to approve the two-year transition of remaining elementary sixth graders to comprehensive middle schools, second.
Okay, moved in second to approve the sixth grade to mid, to middle school transition plan. Are there any questions? Uh, Member Donley, you want to speak to your, why you pulled it?
I was just hoping to have the advantage of more debate on this in my decision-making process. Some of the concerns that I have are the impacts to the, the, well, overcrowding that might result in some of the middle schools from this, from this process. And also, I'm trying to fully understand, and it's complicated, because of the middle school model, which has additional planning periods in the middle school years, um, unless you have adjustments to the PTR, so you have more kids per class, then moving kids from sixth grade to there might actually cause additional increases in cost. But I think the plan is to compensate that within a higher class sizes. So I, I was just hoping for more discussion of that before I actually voted yes or no on this, because those are concerns I have.
Thank you. Dr. Bryant, did you want to share the intent of the transition plan?
Yes, um, so a, at a high level, um, it sounds like the two questions are around overcrowding and the middle school model. Will, will there be an increase in cost? And what we've shared is that as a result of the, uh, PTR adjustment that we proposed, um, you know, the middle school PTR is different than the elementary PTR, um, that it would be a net wash, um, because we'd be maintaining the middle school model. And I'll go ahead and defer to my team if you have comments on either the overcrowding issue, um, or the, um, the actual cost of doing this.
I can give a, a quick history. Um, several years ago, when we, uh, the board voted to make sure we kept the middle school model when we talked about it during budget process, the, the, the team got together and, and they really started working with the teachers and, and leadership at the schools, and that's when they realized that, that, um, really some schools were already, um, wanting to have more of a middle school-like model, as, as Member Holloman talked about, by increasing the PTR, um, even internally. So that's when PTR was increased, and it was so teachers could get to planning periods. So it wasn't just the administration that came up with it, it was a committee, and I don't think Kirsten's.
She is.
Oh, Kirsten's here tonight. She was working as part of the.
All right, good evening, um, board. So through the president, uh, Member Donley's question about, um, just kind of where that came from. Um, if you recall, uh, middle school model essentially was a big sticking point in AEA negotiations, uh, two contracts ago. And so, um, out of those contract negotiations, there was an MOA to develop a, a middle school scheduling committee. Um, at that time, we had eliminated that, what, what we've kind of referred to as an extra planning period, um, in general discussion. Um, and, and the committee with folks from ASD administration, principals, um, and the teachers' union, um, all came up with the agreement to take the extra PTR, um, in middle school in place of adding that period back into the schedule. And so that's how it was paid for, and it was a joint project, and at the time, the board agreed to the increasing that PTR in place of that extra period of the day. So that's how it was paid for at the time. Moving forward, that's, that's the discussion item here tonight, obviously, for the board to decide.
To answer, um, through the president, to Mr. Donley, to answer about the overcrowding, that's one of the reasons why we asked to have all of next year to be able to study this, um, to be able to take a look at all of it. We thought that it was premature to be able to give a recommendation to do this move next year. That's why we asked for all of next year to be able to work through all those issues that, um, could come up as we really analyze our, our middle schools.
Yeah. Thank you, guys. Thank you. Member Higgins?
This is a, a, a pretty big issue to me from, uh, looking at the impact on students. And I look, and I've tried to go back and look at some studies for two thousand and seven Duke, and there's a more recent one with Philadelphia, and looking at the pros and cons of this issue, and it just, the real highlights of it, factors in favor of sixth grade and elementary. Uh, sixth graders in middle school have more, um, um, behavioral problems than peers in elementary. Sixth graders in elementary school test higher than those in middle school, and it refers to a recent study within Philadelphia supplementing the same thing and holding true with what Duke has done. So academic income, outcomes are impacted. Uh, sixth graders in middle school are more exposed to older teens, may have more negative influence, and middle school, uh, are usually larger to, than elementary, rightly or wrong, that has an impact as well. And, um, they tend to be located further away from home, and that's a factor as well. Factors in favor of middle school, and let's look at both sides of this issue, right? Sixth graders in middle school have greater access to extracurricular activities. I've heard the superintendent make reference to that, and that's an important issue I know for a lot of kids. Placing sixth graders in middle school allows sixth graders more independence, that can be a pro or con. And then middle school offers innovative programs in which sixth grades might be, uh, might want to participate. So there's a, a number of issues there, but I'll put to the conclusion, and this, uh, it's kind of interesting, it's all financial-based. Some of the school districts out there putting fifth graders in middle school, uh, some have eliminated the middle school to put seventh, eighth grade in others, it's all financially-driven decisions, and it's not, uh, student, uh, based. And that's where I fall into the problem. But when I look at the conclusion, I always like that, the sixth grade is a critical time in a child's education because it's a time of physical and emotional transition from childhood to adolescence. The real answer to whether sixth grader belong depends on the particular sixth grader. There are some children who would rather, who would be better off in middle school because they are mature enough to deal with the extra challenges. Other sixth graders are unprepared for such a drastic change and need the security of an elementary school. Decisions have been made for whole classes of sixth graders, however, the factors in favor of keeping sixth graders in elementary school seem to outweigh the reasons for placing them in middle school. I, mine, mine is always voting kids first, okay? And academics is a big issue to me, and I know the issue of how many schools, how many, what we could do. We, we give a presentation where we're gonna go with a middle school up to a hundred and thirteen percent to make this accomplish, okay? So you get a sixth grader in a school with a hundred and sixteen percent, that's a pretty big deal, uh, to me, and that's a concern. This issue is being voted on with the idea we're going forward with. This is not like the budget, we're just voting, we'll wait and see more money. This is to move forward with this, and that's a serious concern to me because I haven't seen any studies out there looking at this that really supports the idea that it's better for kids. It saves money, just like moving the, eliminating middle school, putting sixth and seventh graders, eighth graders in elementary and, or changing at seventh grade in elementary, eighth grade, ninth high school, and breaking that up because of financial considerations. In Florida, there's a number of states where they've had districts that they had to do this, but I don't want something totally driven by finance, and I haven't seen something, to me, compelling that this is okay for kids, that this is gonna help them without a negative impact. So when I vote, the, the first vote I vote, every vote we vote, we're voting on the outcome of kids, and I just don't see it here. Now, I don't mind this discussion going forward, I think that's reasonable, but this vote is one to say, let it go. Move it forward, it's made. I'm not in that position, I haven't seen anything presented to us that says this is best for kids. I have read too much that says it's not best for kids, and that's what's gonna drive my vote on this issue. What is best for kids? If the idea of train, changing them is so we can change the number of schools and how we'd structure it, that's a financial consideration, okay? That's finance, that's not kid-based. Academic outcome, at least in this, in these studies, the one in Philadelphia supplementing the one with Duke, there's nothing I've read that shows it's good academic for kids to do this, to move kids at this age into that area for all these kids. And so, you know, I, I'm gonna urge a no, because at this time, but I'm not opposed to discussing this with, in the, in the future, but we've gotta have a master plan on what we're doing academically. So if you can show me that this money is going for something and it's gonna affect academic, I'm open to that, because that, that, that becomes a cost choice, what's best for kids. But right now, I don't see that in front of us, and I read the stuff that says this is not best for kids. Academically, it's not the best. I don't want to vote for that and say this is a sunk decision at this point in time without that additional information. We're voting for kids. We're voting, are we voting just to change the district with the, with the schools for finances and money and all, which other districts have done? And they've said that the primary, uh, issues seem to be always financial-driven, and it seems like that here. So I don't want it to be a sunk decision until we, one, we got the funding, two, we have it part of a master plan to try to deal with the academic outcomes. Then I'm, if you convince me this is necessary to save money to do something else, and, and it's compelling that we're gonna get better academic outcomes, then it's gonna make a tough decision. But right now, I don't think the evidence that's out there, um, supports that we're gonna help academics. I think we're gonna hurt kids, and, uh, without a, without a, within this approach, it's not beneficial. So I'm gonna end up voting no and hope that this discussion, one, if it does fail, that we bring it up again, but not that it's a sunk decision based on the information that we've got in front of us, and it doesn't take much research to see what the outcomes are with the studies done by, by major institutions.
Let's see, Member Holloman, and then Lessons?
This motion is more concerning than a lot of the others to me in that, in essence, we're giving a go-ahead, and then the plan's gonna get developed and things are gonna happen, and I don't know that we ever get to revisit it. As it reads, it doesn't seem to me like we do. Having been in middle school, I'll say that we have some seventh graders that show up that look like we ought to send them back to elementary school for another year or two, they're not quite ready yet. You have others that you look at and you think they don't really need to spend too much time here, they're ready for the ninth grade. We do have sixth graders in some of our middle schools, and to my knowledge, are doing okay. I, I really did appreciate how, when we did some of that to relieve some overcrowding, we were able to give parents a choice and say, would you like for your child to stay in elementary for sixth grade versus going on to seventh grade? To me, that would be ideal, but I don't know if we're looking for that. I, I am gonna say I'm uncomfortable voting yes on this as well, just because we can't quite see the outcome of it, um, or understand what all the options might be. And I'm wondering if, if on this particular motion, we might be able to get, if we defer it for a time, um, if we're able to look at it later in the spring without disrupting the budget process for the administration.
Dr. Bryant?
Sure. Thank you, uh, very much to the president, to Member Holland, and Holloman, and Member Higgins, um, you know, I truly respect, um, your perspective and desire to perhaps have more time to consider all the different options. I think some context is important, um, that it, it appears that this isn't the first time that we've had this conversation, and I, I do want to say that my bringing up this conversation, uh, has more to do with academics. This wasn't rooted in some sort of financial benefit or gain. We started talking about this earlier this year in the context of a budget reduction because we were considering, uh, the idea of eliminating the middle school model. It was very clear, um, across multiple board members, there was not a desire to do that, but there seemed to be curiosity in the idea of moving sixth graders to middle school. So I just want to clarify a couple things. So one, um, this wouldn't be new to ASD, this is happening in middle schools right now, and I will say, as superintendent, there are some quirks to this hybrid model that we're doing right now that do concern me. So one of the reasons why I brought this up is, one, the, the PTR allocation for an elementary sixth grader is different than a middle school sixth grader. I think that's quirky, and I'm not sure why, why that should be. Another academic component to this, uh, is the fact that you'll have a teacher teaching sixth graders, um, at an elementary school, and he or she is using a different curriculum than his or her colleagues at that elementary school. If we were to make this shift, then all, um, teachers would have a greater community of practice, um, perhaps in some sort of PLC or professional development to work with their colleagues using the same curriculum. This would provide an opportunity for alignment. And I would say the number one driver for me is just having consistent access to enriching opportunities in academics. You know, I am concerned, um, and there's certainly a case to be made, arguments on both sides, that if you're a sixth grader in an elementary school, you may not have access to the same breadth of different course options that a sixth grader in a middle school might have. Think about all the different types of math classes that are offered at a middle school that just aren't offered in an elementary school, um, and that goes for electives too. You know, this initially came up because we were having a conversation around six- Uh, you know, this initially came up because we were having a conversation around sixth grade band and orchestra. What if there are universe where all of our sixth graders, because again, this is happening and some of our middle schools have access to the same electives as their peers who may go to a school that happens to be, um, six through eight. I know maturity comes up a lot in these conversations. Um, but I also, uh, want to speculate that perhaps, and maybe the research can support this, there might be some disruption to only being in a new school for two years before transitioning to a new school. Um, in fact, in Tennessee, uh, one of the reasons why they went six, twelve across their huge portfolio, I think it might've been Memphis, is for one, expand, uh, expanded access to academic offerings. And then, um, two, to maintain that consistency and minimize disruptions of transition from school to school. Um, so there have been rich dialogues and perspectives on this issue on both sides. Uh, I do think it's important that we start focusing on academics, which is why I've said consistently since January, we got to start making moves. And this, in addition to the conversations we're having around school start times, are moves that, um, could potentially have a positive impact on student outcomes. So regardless of whether or not this passes tonight, that's fine. But I do want to just communicate that it's time to start making moves that have the potential to help our students achieve academically and it's not really costing us anything. So in these austere financial times, it seemed like something compelling enough to put forward now as opposed to relitigating these conversations that have happened before. So that's just my TED Talk, thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, member Lessons, you were next.
I think this is a topic, I appreciate that input, um, and the thoughtful conversations that preceded it. Um, my own thinking has evolved over the past four or five years. And I have a sixth grader right now. And one of the things that I'm observing is, um, changing sleep patterns. And I think, well, if we have sixth graders in middle school, we might be able to align sixth grade middle school sleep needs with, I mean, sixth grade sleep needs with secondary sleep needs rather than an elementary level, right? If we're moving element, if we move elementary schools to an earlier start time potentially, that would leave, and then we left sixth graders in elementary school, that would put sixth graders who may be physiologically requiring a later start time on that earlier shift. Um, so, you know, as we think about some of those changes to inputs, you know, that's one of the concerns that, um, that's one of the things that I'm thinking about. Um, I would love, um, for sixth graders to all have access to world languages, um, which they cannot, they can have them if, you know, you're lucky enough to be at an immersion school. But if you're at a, a regular neighborhood school, you're not getting Spanish or French or German or any of the other language possibilities, uh, that our secondary schools offer. Um, not that this is about my student, but, um, if a student is ready for more advanced books than can be found in an elementary school library, the contents of an elementary school library may not be enough for a sixth grader with a voracious appetite, uh, for reading. Um, if you are a sixth grader who is capable of doing more advanced math work right now in an elementary school, you might be doing, um, on your Chromebook, trying to focus on a math lesson that's self-directed while your teacher is doing, uh, a whole group instruction, uh, for other students. So there are challenges, um, within the current model that don't allow for differentiated needs or that expanded, um, access to, um, the electives, to regular, um, and dedicated time for, for social studies and PE. Um, so I think that there is a more robust academic diet, if you will, that could be available to students, uh, to meet them where they're at, um, in a middle school setting. And I'm really, you know, one of the first school visits I did last year as a brand new board member was to an elementary school and we had this conversation. And that's when I first learned that you could live in one side of Anchorage and be a sixth grader at a middle school. And then if your family moved across town, you would be enrolled in an elementary school. And that just really astounded me, uh, because it is an odd hybrid system. And I don't know if anybody actually does that, but, you know, logically it could happen. So I think it makes a lot of sense to, um, have one model for sixth grade. Um, and yeah, if you had asked me five years ago, I would have said no. Um, I, I want, you know, I think students need to stay in that elementary model as long as possible. But I think that if you were to talk to an eleven year old or a twelve year old, um, you might find that a lot of them are capable and ready, ready for the challenge as our, you know, as hundreds of students are doing right now at Clark, Bageach and Mirror Lake. So I, I'm going to support this.
I'll go ahead and just tag on to what member Lessons said regarding, uh, one model for sixth grade. Um, I, I think it, it makes sense for me. We have students that are sixth graders in middle school in our district. I'm, I'm also a huge advocate for our college career and life readiness goal. And for me, this fits right into that. Our students that are ready for advanced math, that are in elementary school, struggle with trying to find those services if, if they have, um, oftentimes their parents have to help them accommodate taking a class somewhere else. Um, really being able to offer course options that allow our students to not only have the opportunity to, to do some hands-on work, to select future careers, but also to de-select their future careers. Um, because de-selection for me is just as important as selection for, for students, um, particularly at our middle school and high school level. And, and then there, it, it just, for me, it fits into focusing on allowing our sixth graders the opportunity to be better prepared for college, for career and to be better life ready. So I, I will also support this.
Thank you. Uh, let's see, let's go to member Jacobs and then Higgins, because you've already had a turn. Member Jacobs.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. I, um, I did, I was, uh, probably a no, um, on this a couple of months ago. Um, and what I think swayed me was our last college career life ready goal presentation where we heard from the administration that, um, the transition from, for the remaining sixth grade students to middle school might actually improve algebra two completion rates. Um, and then I, you know, did some thinking through kind of the, the pluses. And I think the, the argument for keeping things as they are with kind of a, uh, inconsistency across our middle school campuses probably is more financial related than, um, moving six, the remaining sixth graders to middle school. And so, um, I think a yes vote here puts students first, makes things more efficient and aligns with our board, board goals, um, regarding making sure our students are college career and life ready. So, um, I will be a yes on this, thank you.
Thank you very much. Member Higgins, we'll come back around.
Yeah, I just have some follow-up questions, I guess, to this one. Because, um, I, I think this is a good discussion because there are pros and cons for different kids, okay? And I think that's true. I think, um, member Lessons, you referred to, you know, a good example of someone who can benefit from it. But the reports from Duke and the Philadelphia talk about the overall impact for all sixth graders and talking about those who aren't ready for this for a variety of reasons and how it impacts academic outcomes. What do we do as a, as a district for those kids that are not in that position to be able to make that transition from maturity and other issues? They're just not ready to be in the middle school model. Uh, and it impacts adversely their academic outcomes. I don't know, and maybe this superintendent does, any studies out there that supports that that isn't the case and that these studies are showing anything other than the fact that overall, and I will agree that some students benefit, there's no question, but overall results come down. And we, if we don't have a plan in place at the same time, for how we're going to handle the students that are in that boat, I think we're, uh, doing a disservice to a lot of kids. That's my concern. That's why I like, um, member Holloman talking about maybe this is something to defer until we have that type of plan because we don't have it right now in place. So those kids that just maturity wise, um, and, and academic issues for other issues ones that the studies show are not going to be as successful when we move them into middle school, what are we going to do to prevent them from falling back? And that brings the, the grade academic outcomes and we're talking about till we can prepare them for college. And that's true for a lot of kids, but for a lot of kids, it's going to have just the opposite impact. It's going to undermine them if they get lower academic outcomes, it's not going to be beneficial. And our goal is that we want to, we want the best for all kids. And I just don't know what the plan would be or if there's any academic data showing that this type of transition does benefit the majority of kids and it goes up. Cause I don't see that in looking at it. I agree it benefits some kids, I don't disagree with that at all, but I just don't see the plan for what we're going to do for those kids that are going to suffer from this decision.
Any other comments? So the vote before us is memorandum one oh seven, approval of the sixth grade to middle school transition plan. Uh, the motion is to approve a two-year transition of remaining elementary, uh, sixth graders to comprehensive middle schools. Let's vote.
Member Lessons?
Yes.
Member Wilson?
Yes.
Member Holloman?
Yes.
Member Jacobs?
Yes.
Member Higgins?
No.
Member Donley?
Yes.
President Bellamy?
Yes.
And memorandum one oh seven passes six to one. And that brings us to, uh, non-action items. These items will come back to you next, uh, at our next meeting. Um, there is no more public comment, different items up there. I know you've been waiting all night.
All right, I'll try to keep it brief, but I have a couple of things I want to touch on. So good evening, ASD Board and Community, uh, with the fiscal year twenty-four budget, uh, finally behind us in many ways. Um, I'm ready to keep the momentum going on keeping academic outcomes as the focus. You know, moving sixth grade to middle school, I love that we had an academic discussion just now on the pros and cons. I think that's a healthy process and we don't have to always agree. But I'm glad we're starting to talk about this and not all that other stuff about buses and all that, all that good stuff. Um, so in any case, um, I'm glad that we're starting to, um, really put our money where our mouth is and start having conversations about what matters for kids, which are the learning experience in our classrooms. So, uh, we look forward to beginning planning, um, on sixth grade to middle school specifically so that twenty-four, twenty-five goes smoothly and families and students are made aware of this shift. Um, so next meeting, an item for board action is our recommendation to proceed with accepting the state's grant dollars to implement a new K three ELA curriculum. Such a move is also directly aligned with our board goals to, um, to ensure, uh, elementary reading proficiency. So while any, um, curriculum requires supported teachers to implement well, one of the major considerations used to select a new curriculum was the impact on the teacher experience. The easier it is to understand and implement curriculum with fidelity will set up our teachers, specifically our newer teachers up for success. And we appreciate the dozens of teachers and instructional staff who participated in a comprehensive vetting process. So our re-energized focus on academic outcomes will also include community conversations, uh, about school start times to gather input on whether this change would be a positive one or not for students and the community at large. Uh, the other week, the board received a brief from a psychologist on some of the potential benefits, um, which make a compelling case to look into this change more closely. And with the fiscal year twenty-four, uh, budget planning coming to a close, uh, we'll gear up for another cycle of planning for fiscal year twenty-five. And I wish I could say it will be a less painful process than this year. But unless something changes at the state level with regards to school funding, we're looking at an even larger deficit going into next year, as member Lessons shared earlier tonight. And there'll be fewer options to minimize impact on students and learning. Next year's deficit could easily be over seventy million dollars, which is a staggering amount. So with that said, I was blown away by how engaged and knowledgeable our legislators were on this particular issue when I visited them in Juneau last week. Uh, there will never be a universally popular solution for how to address such a big issue, um, when state revenue streams are stagnant. But there seems to be a sense that something should probably be done about this. And now we just need to go through the process of deliberating what that something should be. So some may wonder what ASD would do if we were to receive more funding from the state. But the public needs to understand what I just mentioned previously. We're currently facing a structural deficit of a substantial amount of money. So unless we receive a substantial amount of recurring funding, we'll still need to be making budget cuts and looking very closely at our operational footprint. So in other words, we'll likely be maintaining what we have at best. And realistically, even with more funding, we need to start thinking about how we want to reimagine the ways that we do business to support student learning during these lean times. So, you know, one example I want to share that I think the public can relate to is bus funding. So for example, when transportation funding was held flat since twenty fifteen, districts including ASD essentially continued paying bus drivers twenty fifteen wages in the twenty twenty-two market. And what happened? Districts, including ASD, had to suspend bus service for students. And how did we get out of it? Uh, in ASD, we raised the wage by twenty-five percent to be more competitive. And we're so glad that our, our drivers are back on the streets, but now the cost of doing business has risen in that area. I wouldn't be surprised if we needed to move in a similar direction with other groups of employees because chronic vacancies could indicate wages are not competitive for some positions. That investment in regional competitiveness increases the cost of doing business as usual. So let's talk about teachers for a second. The state of Alaska only produces one hundred and sixty-four teachers a year, and that's for the entire state, one hundred and sixty-four. And yet ASD alone expects at least one hundred and eighty teachers to retire or leave the district at the end of this school year. So what does that mean? That means we'll need to assess our regional competitiveness, not just with Alaskan teachers, but also with the Pacific Northwest and nationally, just to keep our classrooms filled. And yet, we're the only state in the union to not offer teachers the option of a defined benefit retirement, which some argue, um, gives teachers a promise and a hope of a stable income after completing their service. And I'm not advocating for a specific policy here, but what I am saying is that we do need to compete with forty-nine states that do offer that, as well as higher wages and greater spending power. That could mean a rise in doing the cost of business again. So I may sound like a broken record at this point, but I felt compelled to try to share the same point in a different way with the public. An investment in education at the state level would be a positive thing. But ultimately, the main focus is on addressing stagnant funding in light of unprecedented inflation. The conversation on funding right now is just on funding the cost of doing business as usual. So for that reason, if we're fortunate enough to receive more funding, it could realistically still result in cuts and streamlining until we're right-sized and stabilized in our operations. So thank you for attending my TED Talk. Um, again, and I'll just close by also reemphasizing that the focus is on the Abbott-Luke community so that students are supported during this difficult time and transition, transition to new schools next year. Um, that work continues and is a top priority. So thank you, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Bryant. Um, any questions, comments before we move into board comments? Okay. So, uh, thank you, Dr. Bryant. Um, we now have, we'll go into board comments. Uh, I'm going to start, start with member Holloman. And come around.
Sure. It feels like it's been a pretty long year and we're over halfway through, so what could go wrong? Um, I, I do want to thank the, the public and staff for participation in the whole budget process. Um, this has been longer because it started earlier. I, I think that was a good move on behalf of the administration to really get a lot of information out there early. Um, I think the, the things we've looked at, even if we wound up not taking action on them immediately, give the community an idea of where we're headed and what we may be facing in the near future. Um, and I, I think it has raised the discussion about whether or not we are still competitive. I started my career in education in the early nineties when there were literally thousands of people lined up to work in this district. When schools that knew they had vacancies didn't fill them until the didn't fill them until the week that schools started and they just went down the list and called. And if you were by your phone, you might get a job with the Anchorage School District. And if you weren't, they were just going to roll on to the next number. And things have really changed in a dramatic fashion. And, and part of it is, I think as a district, we have to look more at caring for our staff and helping them develop in ways that are meaningful to them. To some degree, I think we're still locked into the idea of developing them in ways that matter to the district. And that never creates a warm fuzzy feeling on professional development day. But, you know, a whole lot of people love this district. They love working for it. They love the community and we have to grow that. We have to make that stand out somehow in order to retain those people and bring other people in. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Member Lessons?
So as far as I'm concerned, planning for FY25 begins now, tonight. And as we shift from FY24 to FY25, I will look forward, as Member Jacobs alluded to administrative updates regarding any and all possible efficiencies, including, you know, an understanding of what we might do with the Ed Center to help plan for, as Dr. Bryant shared, you know, how are we going to do business as usual with stagnant funding? Or conversely, how could we reimagine education in really exciting ways if we had adequate funding to do what we can only dream of? So as we get there, as we think about that future, I want to amplify and paraphrase something shared by one of our principals in a comment to the board. Creating a school that has a chance of teaching and supporting hundreds of individual non-standard human lives requires investment.
Yep. Awesome. Absolutely. Thank you. Member Wilson?
So I have spent the last two Saturdays, like seven in the morning till four in the afternoon, volunteering at our elementary basketball tournaments. And I don't know if all of you know about those, but I, I just wanted to acknowledge Mr. Leroy Jones. He is a teacher at Willow Crest Elementary. For the past 20 years, this teacher's been committed to coordinating a basketball league for elementary students. Many of our elementary schools participate in this league and the culmination is, is two tournaments, one last Saturday, one this Saturday, or this past Saturday. And it's an opportunity for our students to participate in a basketball league free of charge. So some, for some of our students, this is the only opportunity they will have to participate in a structured league like this. And I, I just really appreciate all of the educators that volunteer their time because this is after school, this is weekends, this is their family time that they're giving up to coach these kids and give them this experience. And, and I just also wanted to point out that even before Mr. Jones was able to get a sponsor for this event, he even paid for the trophies out of pocket. So it just, I appreciate the commitment of our many educators and, and how they go above and beyond for our kids. So I just wanted to say that because they are amazing. I also appreciate the commitment of our community organizations. One of our folks that testified today, I believe, talked about the kids having the opportunity to meet two-time Olympic speeds, speed skater Shawnee Davis. And that was our community organizations that came together to, to bring him up so that our students had the opportunity to meet him. I really believe you have to see it to be it. And it's really nice that many of our organizations try to bring those opportunities that they wouldn't necessarily have to meet some of our fantastic Olympians and whatever it may be to meet our students. So thank you to all of them for, for all of their work. I, I was not able to attend the Alaska Black Caucus's Betty Davis, excuse me, African American Summit Education or Summit this, this weekend, but I, I know that they had a, an amazing education forum. Several of you were there. So I just wanted to point that out because I, I, I know there was robust discussion and it was very beneficial for the community to hear more about our fantastic education system here in Anchorage. We also have a career fair. ASD has a career fair tomorrow here at the Ed Center and it's entitled Join Our Team from 3:00 PM to 7:00 PM. So if you know of anybody who would like to learn more about employment at ASD, please ask them to come participate and, and talk to our folks here. Again, that's tomorrow from 3:00 to 7:00 PM here at the Ed Center. Also, the 2023 online lottery is underway. So I, I'm always excited about that because parents of kindergarten get, get to find out, or future kindergartners get to find out which schools they, they have the opportunities to attend. Also, please take a look at our family survey. It's a school climate and connectedness survey that is available and we want to know what you think about your child's school. Your answers will help ASD to understand how they can work to improve the school. And also more information on the website. And we also have a communications committee meeting on Thursday at noon. So if you're not, if you would like to, either you can attend in person or you can watch online live stream. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Member Donley?
I want to thank Member Wilson for mentioning the elementary basketball league because for years it was very much under the radar and wasn't really an official school district function. And, and Mr. Jones has done a great job over there at Willow Crest, my, my elementary alma mater. And kind of had to track that down as a parent to even discover it existed. So it's really good that we're talking about it now. Thank you. You know, I, I've raised concerns for the past six months over the process by which the district reviews books and, and other instructional materials. And I remain concerned that this really important process is, is not something that's open to the public now. The controversial concerns committee at this point in time holds its meetings in private. Public's not allowed to observe them. They don't record minutes of the meetings, to my knowledge. And the membership, we don't, even as board members, don't know who else on the committee at this time. And I have previously expressed concerns that I think that seems to be directly in conflict with the open meetings and open records laws. I, the work session today, I asked for a copy of, because I was advised there was a legal opinion that said somehow this was all okay. So I've asked for, that we make that public because one of our primary goals here and one of our, the ethos of this district is transparency. And this seems to fly in the face of that transparency. So I'm really hoping that we can make that public, that legal opinion and, and let the public weigh in on whether or not this is the proper way to conduct this process for, for formal complaints regarding particular instructional materials. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Jacobs?
Thank you, Madam President. I did want to echo the sentiment that I think we need to start our FY25 budget process, or at least outlining and making it clear to the community and to lawmakers who are working in Juneau right now, what that might look like for us and start that process sooner than later. What I've heard from a couple lawmakers now is that they, you know, they weren't sure kind of the scope and the magnitude of some of the problems across the state that would occur in various FY24 budget cycles. And so I think everyone should be on the same page with what's at stake for FY25 so that there isn't any confusion once school districts react to what happens when the session ends. And then I just would like to say, and I think this was well said earlier by Member Holloman, that our staff are doing more with less. And so the, I guess my appreciation goes out to administrators, support staff, our educators, our district administration for making learning happen every day. You have a board that supports you. Thank you. Please continue to connect with us and reach out to let us know how we can support you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Member Higgins?
I've got an hour and 55 minutes. I wanted to appreciate the time left in the meeting, but I, I first of all, want to comment and I appreciate the superintendent's comments. I think it was a good discussion this time. I like it. There were pros and cons. A lot of the decisions we made, we need to have an opening and say, let's talk about both sides of every issue. And let's always make sure that when you get a sales job, it's not just one sided and it's both sides. And I think this was a, a good discussion tonight. So I want to appreciate that. I, I agree, we need to move forward to 2025. We're not done with the, the budget for next year because we don't know what the legislature's going to do. And so we're trying to talk about how we're going to remodel the house while we're putting off the fires and it's burning. So it's very difficult and a distraction, but I do think we have to get to the remodel issue. We get to talk about outcomes and, and opportunities, even if we weren't having budget cuts and they kept it up, we need to look at opportunities to improve academics. And that means if we need to cut in areas and do more in others, I'm, I'm 100% supportive of that. Couple of observations just for tonight. It, it hit me during the presentation that I had to look up a term MTSS and it, and the, and the point was that we're, we're having a meeting for the public and the public's not following us when we say sped, when we say ELL, when we say MTSS, they're not following what we're talking about because it may be terms we use all the time, but it's not terms that they understand. And, and I appreciate the public that's logging into this and looking at it, whether it's students or just parents or, or general public, that they understand what we're talking about sped being special education, whether English language learners. But it means more meaningful if we use that expression rather than initial letters that, that may confuse people. And I really want them to be able to follow us and understand what we're talking about because it impacts their kids and impacts the, the district. So I appreciate that. It was a little disturbing tonight, listening to the censorship comments and things of that nature that were out there because I don't think this board has ever taken a position to want to not deal with issues. But I do understand that transparency is critical and that even, I don't want to be in that position where we're banning books and doing things overboard. I will mention in 1990s, right before, my wife was on the school board one term, and they banned the American Heritage Dictionary because it gave definition to words that were used on the playground. And so they could look it up and find out what they were saying. So they thought that was bad and they banned it. When my wife got on the school board, I gave her that book to celebrate her being elected to the school board. I, 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 I don't want us in the issue of playing censorship on the board. By the same token, I do want to appreciate the fact that they were raising concerns that they think are legitimate in regards to their reading material. And I hope that there is a process here to make sure that there's a transparency of what's going on. But I, I'm not in favor of banning the word gay other places, ban the word this, ban the word that, all these, this, this, just isolate community parts of it, things like that. By the same token, I, there's legitimate issue associated with some of these concerns too. So I want to weigh it both ways. I don't want to just wash it under the rug, but I don't want to get in a banning mode at all. But I just don't know, the role, the role of the board has been to, to rely upon educators to make those kinds of decisions. And we look towards the administration to do that. We don't get into it on the board. I don't want it to become a political issue, but it is legitimate to say that they were, I appreciate them raising their concerns and I hope that a proper review is conducted with it. So with that, I'll yield the rest of the hour and 50 minutes.
Thank you. Ms. Shaw, do you have any final comments?
No.
Okay. Thank you. So I just have a couple and then we will pass to the superintendent. I just want to thank the staff for dinner tonight. It was wonderful. We appreciate your thoughtfulness. Thank you. I'd also like to thank Member Jacobs for stepping in this last few weeks for, and taking on the president duties while I dealt with some family issues. So thank you, Member Jacobs. I'd like to thank Member Lessons for taking the lead on the assembly resolution, the partnership with the assembly to increase the DSA. And I want to thank the assembly for their resolution. I'm hoping it passed tonight, or at least they, they, it went through their process tonight to support and increase the DSA. Other than that, I, I, I do want to thank everyone for showing up. And I did want to do one clarification, if I could. There was never an intent by the, this board to silence a parent. We did interrupt. There was a point of order that disagreed with the ruling of the chair. When that happens in Robert's Rules of Order, the board votes to either uphold a chair or not uphold a chair. That vote was, that was a procedural vote. It was not a vote against the parent. The parent was allowed, after being interrupted, the parent was allowed to continue in his, that testimony. So sometimes I say that because sometimes when we conduct ourselves using Robert's rules, it does look a little different to people, to the untrained eye. But it was an interruption, an objection to the chair's ruling, which goes immediately to a board, board vote, and that was the vote. So I did want to clarify that. I was not in the boardroom. I was online, but that was that process. So I, I just wanted to clarify that. Dr. Bryant, do you have any comments?
And on that note, happy school board appreciation month again. This is clearly a very challenging time to be a school board member in America and I am just blessed. So I'm blessed to be surrounded by this wonderful set of colleagues. So thank you for the many hours you put into ensuring that our kiddos are in good hands.
Thank you. I hearing no other comments. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.